Thank you so much TJ. Good morning Board of Commissioners and to the citizens of Douglas County. We will call this August 17th, 2020 work session to order. And before I start, I would like to just acknowledge the presence of our commissioners. And when I call your name in your district, if you could just respond whether you're present or not. District one Commissioner Henry Mitchell III.
Madam Chair, I just talked to Henry, he's gonna be a tad late, but he's coming.
Thank you. District two and Vice Chairman Kelly Robinson.
Present.
Okay. District three Commissioner Trenia Carthon. I see Commissioner Mitchell just joined us, and I see you Commissioner Carthon. Okay. And Commissioner Geider, District four Commissioner Anne Jones Geider.
Present.
Okay. So we have all our commissioners here this morning. Thank you all for being here and joining us. Due to the continuation of the coronavirus pandemic, the latest and also the latest increase in the spread of the virus in the community. Today's meeting is being held virtually again, and again, we will stay, remain in lockstep with the governor's executive orders. Who has, those orders have been extended to September the 10th. And Board of Commissioners, we will, our next meeting, should I say, and it's certainly tentatively, would be September the 15th in person. But we will continue to monitor the governor's orders and then anything is subject to change at this time. For obvious reasons, it is important for us to remain vigilant with washing our hands on a continuous basis, watching our social distancing, and also last but not least, it is highly recommended that you wear a mask while in public. Clark, thank you so much Board of Commissioners and citizens. Clark, did we have a public, any public comment this morning?
Yes ma'am, we have one citizen to sign up, and that is Ms. Novy Mitchell.
Okay. Thank you so much. Clark, could you read our instructions for joining, you know, before Ms. Novy Mitchell appear?
Yes ma'am. First off, we ask that citizens and everyone mute your phones. Or if you are on Teams, please mute your video and mic until your name is called. Please keep your comments to under three minutes. The clerk will notify you if your time is up and ask you to wrap up your comments. So please just finish up your sentence at that time. Once the public comment is over, if you choose to remain in the meeting, please just keep your phones muted or your Teams video and mics muted for the entire time of the meeting. If you wish to leave the virtual meeting, you may do so at any time. And you may continue viewing the meeting on live web stream on DCTV 23 on our Facebook page. So I will go ahead and see if Ms. Mitchell is on the line. Are you there Ms. Mitchell?
I am.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay. This is, I thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners for the opportunity to come before you today. The issue concerning me is the potential of raising the millage rate, which equates to the increase in our property taxes, which is very serious and concerning matter to a lot of Douglas County citizens. As you're aware, this pandemic has caused some emotional, mental, physical, and financial stress for a lot of your constituents here in Douglas County. Although you may be able to pay your bills and obligations because you still have your jobs and your paycheck. There are many of your constituents that do not have that luxury. My belief is that this burden of paying an additional $500 or $1,000 in property taxes, which I have, has, could potentially cause some people to lose their homes. The current tax bill and the market values have increased. And this increase is due November 2020, three months. I don't know why the commissioners, Madam Chair and the commissioners cannot wait on those collections instead of just adding, considering adding more burden to us. I implore you to reconsider and not increase the property taxes by increasing the mortgage payment for some of your constituents, adding additional burden to them. And for some, ownership may be out of reach. Continue to look at each department, I'm sure you have, continue to look at each department within the county. And starting with the commissioner chair and the commissioners, reduce your budget from $200 to $400 each to show the other departments that you are willing, have been willing to assist with that. I appreciate the opportunity. I think, I thank Commissioner Mitchell and Robinsons a few years ago when they voted against the millage rate, the increase in the millage rate, knowing that their constituents were very upset about that. And they were looking at what happens, especially with some people who are choosing to buy medication or food, an additional $15 or $20 is still out of reach for them. So please consider these individuals as well. Thank you again for the opportunity and make it a great day.
Thank you so much Mrs. Mitchell. Appreciate your contribution to county government. Board of Commissioners, next we have some presentations that are coming before us this morning. We have three presentations. We have a COVID-19 update, and Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman will be presenting this morning. And certainly wanted to certainly dovetail on our educational campaign. It appears that we are making some progress, and I'm so excited about the news that Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman have for us regarding the mitigation of COVID-19 in Douglas County. With no further ado, Dr. Me Mark, are you on the phone? Are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm all, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. And then Lisa Crossman's with me. Let me see if I can get my presentation going. Great. All right. Thank you for having us today. Wanted to go ahead and just give you a COVID-19 update. That we do want to let you know the state of the county as it relates to COVID-19. Cases right now are 2,848 confirmed cases in Douglas County.
Dr. Me Mark, you here?
With 58 cases that we've actually seen improve. Is it not working?
It's choppy.
Choppy. So if you could, everybody, one, if you could mute your phones, please?
It is choppy. Okay, I'm sorry. Let me see if I can get this.
Dr. Me Mark, are you Wi-Fi?
Let me see, I'm getting
Yeah, she's probably Wi-Fi and
Another, yeah, I apologize about that. Can you hear me a little bit?
Yes.
I apologize. Let me see if I can switch the Wi-Fi to another Wi-Fi that I have.
You can, no.
Okay, let me.
Now let her switch.
Okay, it's a pretty, she's at school, so I'm trying to work from home. Giving me a little challenge this morning. A little bit better. Okay. Okay. All right. Is that a little better?
I think that's a whole lot better.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, sorry about that. So just to reiterate, we have 2,848 cases from last night and 58 deceased right now in Douglas County. So today was one of the first days I've actually seen in the last few weeks, actually, where hospital numbers are looking a little bit better. And so we, in Douglas Hospital, we continue to have some critically low inpatient beds, but the critical care beds have actually, actually improved a little bit. And so there's a little room there, and that, that is definitely good, good news and good to see. We will see some increase in the deaths because that's a lagging indicator. And so what that means is, you know, after you get your cases and then the hospitalizations will follow, and then deaths will unfortunately follow that. So there has been a slight increase in the number of deaths because we had a very big surge in cases towards the end of July, I mean, end of June and mid-July. So this is where you see the cases, and in the blue line, you see Douglas County. And you see that we had quite a surge back in about mid-July, and it seems to be coming down a bit. Now, the last two weeks, you kind of have to chop those off because the cases keep rolling in. So they're a little bit late. So you can see that we've come off of higher plateau and it's coming down slightly. For those of you that have not gotten a chance to see DPH's new website or the website, you can see these updates that were made. You can see how, you can click on the county and Douglas County on the map on the left, and it'll give you the total cases and as well as the cases for 100,000 over the last two weeks. That's a number that, that seems to be something that everybody's kind of looking at because it gives you a state of affairs and what direction that we're heading. So you see that the number is 323. And to put that in perspective, when we were at our spike back in July, it was over 400 cases per 100,000. And that, so it's going in the right direction, that's one thing. But, you know, to give you some perspective, anything over 100 cases for 100,000 is considered high, high transmission. So we're still three times over the high, but it is going in the right direction. And everything that we're seeing is supporting that. So very good news, and we need to continue doing what we're doing to keep bringing that number down. When you look over on the right side, you can see the, the cases in the graphic on date of onset. So you look at that and you see that big spike that we had in July, and then you see it's coming down some. So everything seems to indicate we are going in the right direction. I wanted to let you know about testing. So testing has been going really well. We previously, so it's been, it's been a kind of a huge battle to get all the testing in order. So either we did not have enough access to testing, and then when we did, the testing got overwhelmed. And then we had big delays in testing, getting the results. We, we seem to have hit our sweet spot right now, which is really nice. Over 7,000 tests have been done in Douglas County by Cobb and Douglas Public Health alone. Some of you may know, we do have our site, the fixed site over at Douglas Health Center, but we've added a bunch of mobile sites as well so that we can have better access. One of the other very key indicators that we look at is positive percentages over the last few weeks. And so what I've seen in the last week or so is that the positive rate for Douglas County has been between 1 and 8%, and the average is 5%. That's fantastic. 10% is when we really start getting worried, but the numbers have been coming down. So we've been seeing, you know, probably between 5 and 7%, which is really great. That if we can get less than 5 is very, very good for the county. We have, we talked about having increased access. We have over 3,000 tests available per week for Douglas County. And then that, we have great result times. We are hearing that some people are getting the results the next day, but usually it's about two to four days, which is really good. And it's closer to two, which is really what we want to hear. We've made some great strides. Turn it over to Lisa to continue with the, some more of the presentation.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks again for having us this morning and for everything that everyone, our residents are doing to help bring these rates down. We are so excited that we are going in the right direction. Wanted to give you a couple of updates. As Dr. Me Mark said, we have our, we are offering over 3,000 test appointments each week in Douglas County. We've dramatically increased those opportunities since the end of July. I would be surprised if someone who needed a test could not get in today somewhere, or at the very least tomorrow. We're offering our Douglas Public Health Center, as you can see, Monday through Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. We've partnered up with CORE, which stands for Community Organized Relief Effort. They're an international organization that goes around to provide disaster relief. And they've been going around the country for the last several months, offering testing. And so we've partnered up with them to offer a number of locations in Douglas County or for Douglas residents. So you can see a few of the options there. We're at the South Cobb EpiCenter, which is not in Douglas County, but we do have a lot of residents that seem to be coming over there because of the ease of access off of I-20. We're offering testing at the Douglasville Town Center location on Stewart Parkway every Wednesday and Friday from 1 to 7. Word of Faith Worship Cathedral. And then a week or so ago, we were at the Douglas County Courthouse, and we tested almost 300 residents at that event. And we're looking at some other locations this week. Our Douglas CORE model is a self-swab, nasal, shallow nasal swab. And so if you go over to the Douglasville Town Center location, that's, you'll see that method being used. And then we've partnered up with our Wellstar Congregational Nurses, and they're working with our public health staff to offer two to three events a week in Douglas County. We've been pretty regular out at the New Mountain Top Baptist Church. Saturday, I think it was Saturday, we were at the Crossroads Church, and then today we are over at the Pantry. And so you can find all of these locations on our Cobb and Douglas Public Health website to find the newest appointments available. And then we also partner with Metro Atlanta Ambulance Services to go to some of our high-risk locations, like they've gone to some of our homeless shelters and long-term care facilities when we need to send paramedics in to help do those tests. And so that's continuing throughout this. All right, next slide. I did want to bring attention to the new executive order. Many of you know that Governor Kemp signed a new executive order on Saturday. As Chairman Jones said, she, the executive order for the public health state of emergency was extended through September 10th. And then he also extended the safety measures through the end of August. So if you look at this document, and I've got the link available for folks, you can always get it through Governor Kemp's website. But here are some of the highlights of that executive order. One, it just reinforces the governor's authority over a public health emergency, and it prohibits local actions that are more or less restrictive than the executive order. Except on this most recent executive order, it does carve out the opportunity for local school systems and local municipalities and counties to have mask mandates as long as they, those counties are over the threshold requirement. As Dr. Me Mark mentioned, high threshold is defined as greater than or equal to 100 positive cases per 100,000 residents. And so Douglas County is above that. It also adds some additional guidelines. First of all, it maintains all the business guidance that was in previous executive orders. But it adds a couple of things. One, it allows the Georgia Board of Dentistry to award temporary licenses to applicants. Mainly that's because their exams have not been able to be hosted. And it allows them to go, to start practicing and have temporary license as long as they are working under a licensed dentist. And then previously in the executive orders, it had some recommendations for summer schools. Those are now school requirements in this executive order. And it still gives local boards of health authority over mask and social distancing guidance as is practical. Next slide. This is just the link, if anybody wants to go, this is an active link that'll take you right to that current executive order. All right, I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Me Mark.
Great, thank you Lisa. So, you know, we have talked about just being on the right trajectory, and we're, we're really excited about that, coming off of some high-stress times for everybody. And so we want to reiterate the steps that need to be taken to continue going in this direction. We've talked about the three W's of wearing your mask. And we're so excited, every time I drive around in Douglas County, I see all the signs out and, and the reminders, and that's great. So continue to watch your distance. So trying to keep at least that six feet distance away from other people, continuing to wash your hands. And when you go to the CDC, avoid large crowds is a, is a big reminder as well. We have seen many an outbreak that have started in large crowds, and that includes weddings and funerals and parties. And so it's really important not to become complacent with that. Continue, please taking caution if you are high-risk. So that includes people that are, that have those chronic medical conditions who are elderly or immunocompromised. When we review our death records, they continue to be an elderly folks, but a lot of medical issues. And, you know, one of the few big ones are diabetes and hypertension and obesity as well. And you may not think of those as, you know, medical conditions that will put you at such high risk, but we are certainly seeing that. And, and I'm seeing some patients who are undergoing cancer treatment. Please be very cautious, even if you don't go out, but who's coming to see you is very important to keep yourselves protected. Remember these steps over the holidays. We have another holiday coming up, and we saw a tremendous spike at our last holiday. And we really wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, you know, for us to continue to try to get life going back as normal, that we really got to continue being cautious. Continue to monitor vaccine progress. We were cautiously hopeful that that will be coming at the end of the year, and we were helping to prepare for that as well and to administer vaccines to our community. And please just don't become complacent. We have put a lot of hard work as a community into this, and we've all made so many sacrifices. So we're just asking to just keep going a little longer so that we can keep this reduced and hopefully get our kids back into school soon.
And Dr. Me Mark, I just wanted to add to step off of Chairwoman Jackson Jones' comment early on about the mask campaign. Cobb and Douglas Public Health has worked with Douglas Emergency Management to secure hundreds of thousands of masks. And we've made those available through the county properties and also through the city of Douglasville. So there are many locations where nonprofits, where individual residents, and folks can get masks if they don't have one now.
Thank you very much. And at the end of our presentation, we can certainly take any questions if there are any.
Thank you so much, Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman. We appreciate this presentation this morning. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions or comments for Dr. Me Mark or Lisa?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Carthon, you have the floor.
Either to Ms. Crossman or to Dr. Me Mark, are we anticipating doing any walk-up mobile testing? Because we do have quite a bit of people who do not have their own cards within the county that are looking to be tested as well.
So Commissioner, with our CORE testing and our public health sites, if we have folks, we prefer for them to be pre-registered on our website. But all of those locations allow for folks to register onsite if they can't register ahead of time. And we have staff that'll make them available to register. We also have had a number of folks who will walk up at our locations, and we'll just kind of get staff and, and take them over to the tent to get them tested.
Okay. So walk-ups are allowed if you do not have, are to drive through, walk. Okay. And is our model now that we are all doing the self-swab as opposed to the deep larynx testing?
Do you want to take that one, Dr. Me Mark?
Yeah. So the, so just for people to know, because I, I know this is actually a very serious issue for a lot of people. The Douglas Health Center continues to do the deep nasopharyngeal swab. So all the way back, the little brain tickle. But the, the CORE sites and mobile sites are actually all just the shallow nasal. So they'll go in, you do it yourself into each nostril. So that's good. But we are moving towards a model as a state, we're all moving over to the shallow nasal. So, but that won't be for yet another few weeks. So, but we have probably more sites than not that will do the shallow nasal. But please make sure you double-check, it's not on our website, but the, the Health Center is the one that does the nasopharyngeal, and the other ones are the shallow ones.
That is good to know. So as we had you on the line, I just wanted constituents to hear that. Do both types of testing give accurate results or, or close to accurate results?
Yes. Yes, they're both validated to give accurate results. And so, but, you know, if you don't get a good sample for whatever reason, there is a chance of not catching it, you know what I mean? So it's only as good as it is that day. But they have been validated against each other and done quite well.
Okay. And during the time that you have been tested, from the time that you're tested to the time that you get your results, can you talk about, should we quarantine if you feel as though you may have come in contact with someone who could possibly, who, who was tested positive for COVID-19?
Now, that's a great
Uh-oh, you froze on us.
You froze, Dr. Me Mark.
I'm frozen. Oops, who's frozen?
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. I was gonna say, did you want to answer that on the different scenarios on getting tested and quarantining? Lisa?
Sure. Yes, so, okay, sorry, Dr. Me Mark. I wasn't sure if you were talking to the Commissioner of clarifying her question. So a couple of things, Commissioner. One is if you are identified as a direct contact of someone who has tested positive. So for example, you are, have been within six feet for more than 15 minutes of someone who is a lab-confirmed positive, we are going to ask you to quarantine for 14 days. If you develop symptoms in those 14 days, we'd love for you to come in to get tested the day you develop symptoms. If you don't develop symptoms, we would like you to come in on about day 10 to get tested, to just confirm. But please be aware that those tests, positive or negative, do not change your 14-day quarantine requirement. Okay? So that's the first thing. The second is if you are just feeling poorly, right? You're just not feeling great, and you think, oh, let me go rule this out, and you want to come get a COVID test. You're not required to quarantine or isolate just because you don't feel well until you get the results of that test. What I would just say is this is a time for folks to be cautious. If you are not feeling well for any reason, this is not the time to be a hero and go to work or to go to school. This would be the time to stay home at least for the 24 hours fever-free or 24 hours symptoms until you get those results back. And then if they're positive, then you would start your 10-day isolation. If they're negative, then you go back to your doing things as usual, unless you were the direct contact, but doing things as usual, just watching your symptoms. Anything you want to add, Dr. Me Mark? Okay. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, and I think it clears up for a lot of our constituents in the county who kind of wonder back and forth about that. So thank you guys so much. With that, Chairman Jones, I yield the floor.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon. Any other questions from the Board, Board of Commissioners? I just have, okay, Commissioner Geider?
Yes. And I don't know which one of you ladies I should apply this to, so either one of you can answer. Okay, so our death rate per cases is, what, 2%? Per population, our cases per the total population is 2%. But you're saying our hospitalization per case is, is like 12% or something like that? So do you know the percentage of elderly people that are hospitalized? And how long is a normal hospital stay?
You know, I'm gonna have to get that information for you of people that are, are you saying the people who are considered elderly that get COVID that get hospitalized?
Well, whoever gets hospitalized because of COVID, the cases is 336, is what you said, was the numbers that was up there. How long is their stay? Because I know somebody that went to the hospital and they're elderly, and they were, they were sent home now, and they're doing fine. So just wondered how long the hospitalization is normally.
Well, yeah, so it depends on the, the, how critical Well, yeah. So it depends on the, how critical the nature of the illness this time is. So you remember in our first wave, we actually had more elderly people that were being hospitalized at that time. And then the second wave, we actually had younger people that, the second spike that we had, younger people that were being hospitalized. And so, and they were less serious, requiring less critical care service than our previous group. And so, but now it's evening out a little bit more, but still they've, they've made so many advances this time around that the hospitalizations are shorter and they are less critical than they were the first time around. So, but I can get you the kind of exact numbers. It was several days, but it depends. Like if you are, you know, how critically ill you are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield back.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. Yes, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to piggyback on some of the commentary that was made earlier, some of the questioning by my, my peers. And, yeah, we're, we're considered within, what, phase two? Is that accurate, Dr. Me Mark?
Well, well, that's a, that's a, that's an interesting question because there's, there's a lot of discussion that we never came off the first wave. That we had a spike and then kind of we've had our second surge, but we really never did get, get down to low levels of the virus. We've remained high for a while.
Okay. That's, that's fair enough. You don't, you don't have to go further. Right. So we're in phase one and we're learning a lot. You know, I'm gonna go back to my initial, versus standing in the corner versus testing and data. Now, we're smarter forward. We're getting clarification from the Governor on orders. We're, I'm hearing that, okay, so we can locally mandate based on our local needs. Again, sticking with the guidance, right? It's all relative, right? The nuances that is necessary to keep our citizens safe. I do acknowledge the educational, while there may be some questioning about the cost associated with educating our local constituents, it's necessary. If everybody would be conscious in their awareness, we probably would all be saints and we probably all would walk up out of here with, with no issues. But programming and education is very necessary. And so I do appreciate and applaud the efforts of the administration for educating. Dr. Me Mark, I appreciate you guys weighing in on the content associated with some of the educational pieces because we're not playing with this. I appreciate some people politicize this, but we are dealing with life. And so for that, for the smallest efforts, I do appreciate it. Which gets me finally to my point. The cost associated with this, the last time we met, Dr. Me Mark, I don't think you were here, but I've got to get, because we're, we're going into public hearings right now. And, and right now, we've got two things. Our normal operating expenses associated with conducting government as well as obviously on top of the pandemic. Keeping the two very separate. But the last time that we were here, we were asked the question, put up basically a third of our remaining COVID grant. And I just, we may not be able to get into it today. And I think the way it was left is that we'll call it versus Douglas, 25, 75%. We're going to spread this. But I'm like, okay, this is my one question. Well, wait a minute. They got 183 million. We've got 5 million. Why are we giving up a third of ours or are we taking a third of their money? I want you to answer that. Don't answer it now unless you really know. I don't want you to walk into something, but it's something that while I appreciate, hey, look at us, look at how well we're doing, there's still a cost. There's a question. Well, how much money did the federal government give public health via the state? How well are we doing currently with our operations with public health for the money we currently contribute? And one more time, if we're split between Cobb and Douglas, they got 183 million, I got 5 million. Why am I putting up a third of my money to my location versus, are you taking a third of theirs? Don't answer that because I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but it's something that we've got to answer. As, it's gonna move fast. We won't have time to do a lot of audits and things like that. It's gonna go fast, but it can't just be an ask for the sake of it. That's a lot of money and we do have to balance this and we have to show the public that we really do comprehend what's being asked. So with that being said, I have no further questions. I'm going to yield the floor in case my other peers want to say something. Madam Chair, thank you. That's it. I'm good.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from the Board? I just have one closing. Oh, Commissioner Mitchell.
No, you can go ahead.
No, you go on. I was, I was just gonna close out. No, you go on, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Just, just one quick question. With the, the new testing from the COVID saliva-type testing, are we, are you guys in, are we doing that nowadays as opposed to the nasal, you know, scratching up on brain cell to get to it to test? Or are we, are we looking at the newer methods of testing and, and that rapid response to that type of testing? Or we are not there yet? Just curious. Just, just that one question.
That's a great question, Commissioner. So we are not there yet, but I know there is a lot of discussion at the state level about these kind of technologies. And so there, I know they're looking into different things right now, but we're not quite there to deploy that quite yet.
Got it. So, so I guess basically we'll have to kind of find that part of it a little bit later. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. All righty.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. I just wanted to close out with, I heard Dr. Me Mark and both Lisa, you said 100 positive cases per 100,000 in terms of whether, about mask and it says, sounds like Douglas County is way over a threshold. If you could just get me that data, I certainly want to engage in conversations with my Commissioners to, to just start brainstorming what we need to do to, to move forward. Certainly it sounds like the Governor has given each jurisdiction, or should I say municipality, the ability to look at their numbers and make decisions based on those numbers. So if you all, if you could get me that data, I certainly want to meet with my Commissioners and have some discussions to see which direction we want to go. Okay?
Of course.
I really appreciate your, your presentation today. It was wonderful. And we appreciate all the things that you're doing to keep Douglas County citizens safe. And we really appreciate everything and your staff as well. So you all have a great day and thank you for just taking this invitation on a moment's notice. Thank you. All right. We're gonna move on to our next presentation. We have a presentation and a sploshed update by Terry Gable. Mr. Gable, are you there? I see you.
I am.
You have the floor.
Thank you very much and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name's Terry Gable and I'll be doing the August sploshed update for the, for the group. Let me see if I can get the presentation up. Okay, can, please let me know if you have any problems viewing that or, or hearing me and I'll, I'll get started. Madam Chair, I do have David Good is gonna do a, a quick update on our local vendors and our DB participation at the end. David, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. With that said, Madam Chair, go ahead and get started. As I said, we'll be, I'll be reporting on the work completed through Ju- July and then reporting on the June revenues for this month. The, the totals that we're looking at right now that were invoiced at the end of July is right at $43.4 million. That's been invoiced out in the program overall. Fire EMS did not change that much. We had a few small invoices that went out. So they, they're still hanging in right at $20 million total. Transportation did not, didn't change that much either. We had a few small invoices that came in. They are starting to ramp up obviously with a couple intersections and the resurfacing program. So as we move into the remaining calendar year for 2020, they'll start going up in, in numbers. And then the, the, the biggest jump in, in invoicing came in the parks program. As everyone knows, we've have a lot of work going on, several vertical buildings going up in, in the parks program. We invoiced out just a little over a million dollars in parks. So everything is progressing fairly well at this point with the program. The good news during such a difficult time with the pandemic going on is the revenues continue to, to be good. June revenues came in at 2.35 million, which is, if you compare that to the projections, we were several, several hundred thousand dollars over that obviously. So for the year four, the sploshed totals are right at 6.6 million. And again, that's just for year four, which is right at 100, about a half a million dollars over what, what the projections were at the beginning of the program. So good news there. Let's keep our fingers crossed and hopefully that, that trend will continue and we can continue to, to build a good, solid base for the program as we move into the, the fifth and sixth year. Just looking at the graph, you can see that this June revenue was, it tied in the past 12 months, it tied for the second highest month, the last 12 months. If you took out December of last year, which we had a real good month. So again, it's, it's good numbers and we'll continue to track it and monitor the program to make adjustments as we, as we need to and as we need to bring before the Board if that happens. Looking at the, all four sploshed years, again, we're in, we're in the third month of year four. So the total for, for all three years plus the three months and four is right at $82.5 million compared at the 78.7, which was the projected number for the overall program. We're over that by $3.7 million. So that's continuing to hold and, and with a slight increase since we've started year four. I am looking back at the bond obligation. Going into year four, we had an outstanding, outstanding balance of $21.6 million. As, as I reported last month, we'll be paying back this year 17.3 million. The first one will be in October 1st of this year at 509,000. And then in April of 2021, we'll make the much larger payment of 16.8 million. And this will, as we move into year five and as I've reported, that'll be the smallest payment of the total program payback for the bond obligations, which will be right around $4 million for that last payment. But we're, we're working through this one and as we've done in the past, the, the revenues will be held until we get the 17 millions collected. And then after that, we'll, we'll start counting the pay-go money. So with that, we'll move into, if there's no questions over revenue right now, we'll move into some project updates that we've had since last month. In the fire program, the countywide digital radio system, I'm glad to report that we are, it is 100% complete. The chief in, in Tusa has signed the final acceptance letter, releasing them and we are, we, the system is 100% operational. Everyone is very happy with it. We have, I think everybody very satisfied with the job that Motorola's done in Tusa and with this system. And we, it's just been a good partnership with all of them. I'm sure the chief has, has only had good comments with, to, to you guys about the, about that project, but it's going very well. We've got the last invoice from Motorola and it's in the process of being paid as we speak. So this will be the last month that we'll, we'll report on it as, as far as Motorola's part of it. And we'll, we'll, we'll count this one off as a completed project for the program, which is one of our, our bigger projects overall. So a great accomplishment there by everyone and the chief and Motorola and the whole team. Really, it really come out as, as a good job. The ambulance procurement for 2020, the bids are due August the 20th this week and the chief have been chief and Scott will be working towards getting those in production. The fire truck for 2020 is, the purchase order has been approved for this, for the fire truck. The chief and them are going up to Ohio to visit with a vendor. As soon as they can get that coordinated, that trip will be what will kick off the production date for it. Once they get up and, and get the final specs agreed on. And as you know, these, these vehicles take quite a long time to, to manufacture and it'll be next, towards the end of next year, maybe in the fall before we take delivery of the fire truck. But at this point, everything is moving as expected and we're ready to get, get them started. Staff vehicles, or we, the chief and them are expecting, it was two F-250s. The chief and them are expecting them to be delivered any day now. They're a little bit ahead of schedule. We were expecting them in the fall of this year, but they, last report was they were coming in a little bit early. They were two F-250s, as I said, and they'll be equipped with whatever special equipment they need for the purpose they were, we, we purchased them for. And then we'll, we'll get those out, out for, for, for the chief and them to start using. And then the last project that we have with the chief and Scott at this time is, is, as I've been reporting on is Station 11. It is still in the design phase. We have made progress with it. And I mentioned this last month, we had to get enough design data in to make some decisions if it was feasible to, to, for the sewer system hookup with WSA, which at this point, that's a decision that we have made. The cost looks like it's even came down with some adjustments we have made in it. And we're looking at, at that and hooking up with WSA with the sewer system and the overall cost for the project that the engineer's given us. We are now within, what looks to be within budget. So we've given direction to the civil engineer to move forward right now and starting the, starting the final design work. What now will happen is, is we're working, the, the sewer line will, will have to take advantage of State Route 92's right of way. So we'll be working with GDOT, obviously, and WSA through this to get everything worked out. But we'll have to get a permit from GDOT and coach with permit. So plans will have to be submitted to them. At this point, we've had early conversations with them. We're not expecting any issues. We may have a few, we may have some utility conflicts that we'll have to work around, but I'm hoping to get this project ready to let towards the middle end of the fall. It, that what will drive that obviously is, is, is GDOT and what, what their timeframe will be to get us an approved permit. If anything changes with that, I'll keep the Board updated with it. But that was, and it looks like it's, it ended up probably the best way for that project in particular. The septic tank was just not going to work out with, with the improvements that the chief and them were needing on the parking lot. So with that said, we'll, we'll move on in the transportation. That completes the, the updates for the chief firing and fire EMS. The resurfacing program for 2020 has, has finally got kicked off good. The contract was Baldwin, Baldwin paving. And they got started first with John West and Stuart Mill Road, two, two of the, the major corridors that we had on the, the list this year. Miguel's reporting, I think both of these projects are now completed. And Miguel and him are staying right behind them with the, the maintenance paving crew and getting them topped as soon as, as Baldwin's getting them milled out and patched. So we've got a good start with I think roughly about 11 miles of paving this year with the, with a combination of L-MIG and, and the sploshed program. That's well underway and certainly, certainly some much needed resurfacing. John West, as most of you know, and Stuart Mill Road, both of them were heavily traveled roads and, and were in dire need of, of patching and resurfacing. So good projects to get turned back over to the public and I'm sure they'll enjoy the much smoother ride on them. Stuart Mill Road, as I've been reporting, where Miguel's staff is, is winding down with the right of way. We still do have two parcels that he's got to close out on. And one is working with the city of Douglasville. I think we're, we're making some, some headway with that now. And then one last parcel that's gonna need a sliver right of way, but it's got to be obtained that he's working with. It's, right now, moving a little bit slower than we had hoped, but we have gotten it down to two. You know, we started with 10, so we've made a good bit of progress with them. And I'll keep you updated once we get those done. And the plans are mostly complete. It's just be a matter of getting all the right of way certified and acquired and then we can, we can get this project ready for construction. Wright Star Road and John West Road is now under construction. The contract has mobilized out there. Nothing is, no significant work has started yet. They are working through a few details with utilities, but they have mobilized. So we're expecting them to get started here, here very soon. Uh, but they have mobilized, so we're expecting them to get started here, um, here very soon. Um, and getting some dirt turned over and, and start the, um, the turn lanes that, that are part of the project. Sweetwater Church, um, is, is on schedule. Uh, they're, they're continuing to box out for the turn lanes. Uh, and I'll keep you updated with this, really no change. They were just continuing to work. They did, they also had to work through a few uh, utility issues, but nothing now. It's just a matter of, um, trying to get work done in between the, all the showers that we continue to have, um, in what normally is a dry part of our, our summer. Chapel Hill Road is, uh, SEI. We have, uh, Miguel's got them back on track with the, uh, with the design. Uh, the board's approved to move forward with the, um, the five lane section, I'm going to refer to it as, that extended the, the limits now from Chapel Hill High School up to, uh, Anawak, Anawakie Road with a four lane, um, corridor and of course left turn lanes at all the major side roads. So we're back on track with that, with survey, uh, working with WSA and, and they'll be getting Miguel some, some preliminary plans here soon for just initial review to make sure he's good with, um, with them moving into, um, the final plans phase. And keeping in mind, it's, it's, the project has, obviously has been extended during the design phase. But the, uh, design team is, has made a lot of progress with what they've done up to this point. So none of that, none of that is wasted. It would be just a matter of, of getting the information they need on these, the pieces that we added to each end and the survey and data they'd need. And they'll, they'll move right into final plans once they get, um, get that surveying done and, and, uh, get what they need. So, uh, this project is, is well on its way, uh, and hopefully be getting it in the, uh, the next phase obviously will be, uh, right of way. Getting it to that point, getting right away plans to Miguel so they can start the, uh, the right of way negotiations. Uh, Highway five continues being the design phase. No issues there. Um, it's just continuing analysis of everything that's out there, uh, the utilities and, and also moving forward with the design and figuring out the footprint and the template on it and still some unknowns. Miguel reported that, that they've got to get nailed down before they can set, uh, set the final, uh, design for it. Um, and we could be looking at, you know, we're obviously looking at maybe, uh, some additional right of way impacts with the, uh, with the turn lane being longer than, uh, than what we had anticipated. But at this point, no issues, no big issues. They're able to work through, um, what they've encountered up to this point. Post Road Bridge over Dog River, no updates there. Um, our latest, uh, contacts with GDOT and their contractor is he will be in here in October. So we're looking forward to that and Miguel and I'm sure making preparations for whatever they need to do. Um, to be prepared for when the contractor gets in here in October to start that bridge project and get that much needed project underway and completed. Um, maybe this year, depending on how things go with the weather. Um, if we can get a break in the, in the rain some, leading into fall, I'm sure it'll certainly help. Uh, getting into some of our, our sidewalk projects, Lithia Springs Elementary School. Uh, good to report, um, your contractors mobilized. You see some erosion control uh, devices that have gone up out. Uh, this is at Lithia Springs. Um, and they'll be continuing to move into the construction phase and get, uh, get some, um, some dirt moved and you'll start seeing some sidewalk forms go in and, um, as they progress with this project. But it's great to see them out there. The same with, um, Chestnut Log. This is Prime. Uh, on this project, uh, the corporate group was on the Lithia Springs. Uh, Prime has also broke ground out there. Uh, you see some, some work that's been done there with some drainage work. So good news there. We found, we've got these sidewalk projects underway. They should be. Uh, they're small projects, uh, getting through, getting it out of ground, just like with the vertical buildings. Once they do that, uh, the, uh, the project should go fairly quickly and we're hoping to see them completed, uh, by the end of the calendar year. Um, we'll just see how the, that certainly is dependent on weather. So we'll just track that and I'll continue to report on it and keep you updated. Our new Manchester High School project, we, you know, we've made uh, significant progress with the board approving the, uh, speed reduction. Uh, the design team now is working back with GDOT. That was one of the critical things that we needed uh, for the permit to get the protect, protective device at, uh, O ninety-two there. Um, we're right now looking at some form of a hop system. But all that still got it, the revisions have got to be made on the plans now and back to GDOT. Um, and we need their, their final approval on, on that and, and to get the encroachment permit before we can, we can move this project into, um, into construction. So the plans are mostly done. It's just a matter of getting GDOT, um, satisfied with what they need and we'll be, we'll be on our way with it. White Stone Culvert, the, the project, the, the contractor has remobilized on the project that went by there last week and saw he's got a piece of equipment out there now. Uh, so he's back, uh, back at work. The, uh, all the changes have been taken place on the plans, which, you know, resulted in the reduction in cost. Um, hopefully they can get started, uh, and, and, uh, get this project underway. And again, maybe looking at some significant progress here, uh, between now and the end of the year with the, with the culvert. Our street light projects, uh, various, various locations in the county. Uh, Greystone obviously has the biggest bulk of this. Um, they have given us a schedule, um, that we're, we're monitoring right now, working with them closely. Uh, they've authorized eleven locations out of their many locations that they're doing. Uh, they've got project numbers on them. They started on the last week of Ju- July. They started on Simon Road. And we're moving over to Bright Star Road from there. So they, uh, they, they're getting started with it and making hopefully some quick pro- progress on some of these because they're, they're smaller projects. Uh, they are waiting on the I twenty interchanges. They're waiting on special ordered poles for, for I twenty. Uh, as soon as we get those in, I'll keep the board, um, uh, abreast of that. But, uh, so it sounds like that, um, that, that will hold them up a little bit on starting some work. So starting the lighting at the interchanges, but they're moving, they're moving on the, the, uh, street sections and the, uh, the intersections. And they're going, they're going to notify us when the project's completed. Um, coordination now and communication looks like it's, it's going much better. Uh, so hopefully we'll, we'll keep, um, keep everyone, uh, well informed of the progress. Georgia Powers is, is, um, you know, they, they've got the I twenty at Post Road. They, they've had to go back to GDOT on, on that interchange at I twenty. Uh, something came up with GDOT there, so they, it's back in GDOT's hands on trying to get the permit approved there. Once they get that, everything's good to go with, um, with the, uh, the I twenty at Post Road, uh, George Power Project. So everything's progressing there and getting some, get some actual work started and, and moving forward with our street lighting. The highway ninety-two at Riverside Parkway, as I've been reporting, uh, which is good, positive news that GDOT has agreed. All indications right now, uh, they're moving towards a similar project that we had at, um, state route ninety-two at Mount Vernon with what they refer to as a quick, quick response project. Uh, what they, I think Miguel was looking for is final approval from, uh, the state, um, the state engineering office for the funding. And once that's done, they'll, they'll start setting the project and everything, everything put together. And I'm hoping it's, it'll go similar to state route, um, ninety-two at Mount Vernon. Uh, and the, and, but that does depend on the, 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 the bids that come in on the, the signal and will determine the amount of Douglas County's match, if any. So good news there. Uh, it's obviously a much needed, um, uh, project, uh, signal on ninety-two there. The, the Lee Road widening project, our big project, uh, what's turned out to be our biggest project in the program now. Um, the bids are due. Miguel's got in on the street along with, uh, procurement's. Um, big help, uh, the bids are due September tenth. So we've got this project out on the street. It's going to be interesting. I'm sure we're going, um, attract some pretty heavy hitters in the construction industry. As you know, it's a fairly lar- large project. Um, and it's going to take several months for, for completion. But we're looking forward to seeing what the bids come in. And Miguel's been getting some good bids on a smaller project. So let's hope that continues with, with a larger projects also. You would think that it would. Um, and we get some good bids that maybe come in under what the, uh, our engineer's estimate is on the project at this point. Uh, and finally, uh, and, and transportation is Maxim Road Sidewalk. Um, from the GDOT project there at the intersection to, um, to the county line, Cobb County Line. The, the, uh, the design on the project is, it is substantially complete. I'm going to say that about eighty percent. Miguel, we did end up, and I think I reported it last month, with one parcel that Miguel is going to have to acquire. And again, it's just a sliver, but it is, it's something that's going to be needed. And there, he's in, he's in the process of getting an appraisal on that. So that will have to be acquired um, before we can move into the final plan stage and, and get this project out for bid. Um, but I'm fully anticipate getting it out this, this fall and, and possibly seeing this project well underway by the, by the end of the year again, uh, going towards the, the fall and, and early winter. As, as we all know, the weather can be quite unpredictable in Georgia. So we'll see, but there'll be another, um, sidewalk project that we have under construction, uh, which would be great for the, for the program. And with, uh, with that, um, that, uh, ends the update for transportation. And we'll move into, um, into our parks program. Idyllic Park Tennis Courts, uh, on schedule, on budget. Um, they have, uh, it's starting to really look like tennis courts now. We got last week, uh, they did the, um, some of the base paving for the courts. They're getting them prepared for the final coat uh, that goes there, but, um, it's a good clean site. Everything seems to be going well at this point. Uh, they did start also last week. The fencing is going up and the curb around the tennis court. So probably by next month, um, you'll see, um, you'll see some more things up. They do have, they do have a waiting period that they have to let that course set, um, before they can, they can put the final, um, topping on it. Um, so they, uh, will be doing everything else but that. Um, the fencing that we started on the parking lot. And, um, of course the lights are finished. Everything with the building is done. So good, uh, good progress there. And at this point, everything is, is looking, is looking good. The, um, multi-purpose rec center continues to make progress. Uh, I wish they would just a little bit further along, but, um, as, as, as everyone else, they were fighting the, the, you can see it's wet there. So that was the day I took that picture. We, I'm sure we've had a rain there. Um, they're pouring the, the, the finished slab. They got one more small slab to pour for the building. They're pouring that this week. The, uh, the block, which is the biggest, um, material, uh, materials for this, for this project is coming in this week. And then we'll finally start seeing some vertical walls go up and hope, and, um, fairly quickly. And that's just the main girders that, that will, that will span the gymnasium. Uh, obviously they needed to get that up first, uh, before the wall started going up. But we'll get, start getting those, get the slab poured and start getting those in. We'll get the block in this week and, and start up with the, uh, with the walls. And then the, uh, our senior center over in Lithia Springs, um, is going well. Again, it's, um, it's, it's on schedule and on, on budget. Um, TJ was kind enough to, to send a drone out and got us a drone shot. So this gives you a, uh, typically I'm just shooting ground shots. But it gives you a, um, a, a, obviously an aerial view. And you can see the site as a whole, kind of how, that how it lays on the property. You can see the magnolias there with the grass. That's the, obviously the cemetery that we still got to clean up and, and it'll have decorative fencing around it. Um, but they are moving forward with the, the final landscaping and the next thing, uh, probably this time next month, that parking lot will be paved. So they're, they're removing some of the last, uh, uh, earthwork that's in the back. You can kind of see some of the grading going on. They had to lower that down to a little more of a, um, to existing grade where it was before. Um, and then you'll start seeing, if you remember, we've got about a fourteen hundred foot walking trail that goes around the site. Uh, that'll start coming into, into the picture next month for sure. Um, but it, uh, I think it's going to end up being real classy on the outside and obviously for sure on the inside. Um, they are down to, um, as far as the inside goes, they're setting windows, doors, painting. Um, the, the, all the flooring, some of the tile works going in. So you can, you can just tell by that it's, you know, it's, they're getting down, um, in, into the last phase of the project and trying to get everything cleaned up and, uh, and ready to move. We are in the process of, 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 um, also getting, uh, furniture package, uh, uh, under procurement, uh, for the building. And we're, we're working with the, uh, Dawn's office in doing that with the architect. Um, but we, that needs to kind of line up with the, with the building, obviously. So that we, we've got a, um, got that well under, under contract. And once we get, once we get the building ready to open and, and, and get it, uh, equipped. So with that, Madam Chair, uh, well, let me, I got two more here. I don't want to forget about Bill Art and Fair Play. Um, the two projects here are, are, are on schedule, uh, right now on budget. Um, they're both about the same. The, the, um, this one's at Fair Play. It's about two or three, two or three weeks ahead of, of Bill Art. But if, I'll let you know that they're identical buildings, we're starting to get some of the final, that's not the final coats. Uh, but they are certain, they're setting windows and, and doing some of the roof work. Um, but they're getting closer and you start seeing the buildings go up. I think they're going to look real nice. Uh, still got a good bit of work to do on the insides and, and getting them finished up. But, um, everything's moving fairly well. Uh, no, no issues at this point. We've, we've got to get, obviously the, the septic tanks in. Um, but that'll be done towards the end of the, you know, this project. We don't have a choice with the septic tanks, unfortunately with this. It's got to, it's got to be septic tanks and they're never easy when you're working around, particularly in a park. So we got to get through that, but the buildings are progressing, uh, very well. And, um, I'll continue to keep you up, uh, uh, posted with, uh, their progress. Now, so that, uh, that wraps up the, um, the update on the, uh, on the projects, Madam Chair. I can go ahead and let David, um, do the, the vendor update, if you want to do that first, and we both can take questions if that's okay with the board.
If that'd be fine.
Okay, Dave, if you want to, if you want to come on, I'll, uh, just let me know when you want me to change a slide.
Uh, okay. Uh, thank you very much, Terry. Uh, hello, Madam Chair, uh, Board of Commissioners, stakeholders, staff, citizens and business owners of Douglas County. Um, again, my name is David Good, SLOSS Communications Director. Right now with this SLOSS program is Terry has shown you we're doing a whole lot right now. Right? We have a hundred and eighteen total vendors. They have worked on a combined eighty-one projects. Forty-two of those projects are active and thirty-nine of them are complete. As you can see, forty-two of those vendors are right here in Douglas County. Another thirty-nine of those vendors are within the surrounding camp, uh, part of the county. And everyone else is either thirty miles out or within another county. Uh, next slide, Terry. And then, um, as you can see, we have almost seventy percent of all the projects are done by, are done here locally. Uh, Terry just mentioned that we are finishing up on the Motorola project. They are right now, they were by far the largest, um, company that was outside of the state of Georgia. So once this is completed, uh, the numbers will actually vastly go up uh, for local when it comes to revenue. Uh, next slide, Terry. And right now, as you can see, we have about twenty-nine million dollars. Our beings are going to projects, are going to vendors locally here in Douglas County. And that represents, like I said, fifty-five percent. The rest of it, a little bit over twenty-three million. Um, I mean, twenty-four million are going to companies that are outside of the local Douglas County and surrounding areas. Um, we have really worked hard before COVID started to make sure we reached out to local vendors. And once we started going virtually, we're still able to reach out to companies just by going to different events and making sure that we talk to people any type of way we could. Um, next slide, Terry. Uh, right now, uh, we have, uh, DBE, uh, participation. Um, it, that number has increased by sixty-seven, uh, to sixty-seven percent of all the, uh, projects that are active. Sixty-seven percent of those projects are done by either DBE or minority owned, um, firms. And every time I've talked about this program, um, the percentages have gone up. I believe last month it was sixty-six percent. The month before that was sixty-four and before that was in the fifties. And when we started this program, uh, DBE minority participation was at ten percent. Um, I believe this, and I believe that's the end of program. I believe there's one more slide. Oh, that's it. So that's everything when it comes to, uh, the vendor report. Uh, thank you, Terry, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both, uh, Terry and David. Thank you so much for your presentation. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions or comments this morning?
Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you. I'll be quick. Uh, I, I do appreciate, um, uh, this SLOSS update report, um, because it's important. Um, obviously it's a, a very large component of our tax dollars. Even though it, it's sales tax and not necessarily property tax, I appreciate the accounting for it. of our tax dollars, even though it, it's sales tax and not necessarily property tax. I appreciate the accounting for it. Um, um, the last Splosh I, I, I was able to experience was obviously back in two thousand nine and that was a jail. Uh, and it was a much different experience to listen to that monthly report than this one. Uh, this one, um, obviously you can hear how it actually impit, impacts the community. It actually impacts, uh, where citizens can see their tax dollars. See, there's a difference between spending that is internally focused. It's just government based. Just makes employees feel comfortable. Get it. But I also think that the community needs to be, it, it can't be either or, it's got to be both. And so I appreciate this report to get that, you know, to show that accounting. That being said, moving on. All right. So, um, those sidewalk projects are, uh, well, we started this Splosh and advocating back in sixteen. We launched in seventeen. I mean, it's taken almost four, five years for sidewalks, which should have been a quick win. I mean, a whole graduating class and went through high school at the time it takes us to come up. And it's, uh, I'm, I'm saying that in jest, but geez, guys, that's, that's for sidewalks, but I get it. Uh, Miguel, you know, I get it. Um, Terry, I, I get it. It just seems like things that were considered quick wins. Um, it, it just, it takes what it takes. Um, uh, but the, the benefits should be immediate, you know, but, but it's okay. Um, second, so I'm just acknowledging sidewalks. I'm glad to hear they're moving along, et cetera. The streetlights, again, another, what I want to call should be quick win. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that we don't experience what we experienced, uh, before you, Terry. Um, in that I, um, I'm joking, but I'm not. Um, it's important that we keep up with those. Um, you mentioned that there is a list and project numbers. There's an awful lot of lights. So can you ensure that my peers, all of us get a copy of the project lights by both Georgia Power and Greystone for our sections of the, we want to keep up with them. You know, I mean, it was something that they had, um, my peers were able to watch me go through that Riverside Light Project. It's like, it, it, it just took, it was just sort of excruciating. But now you've got lights over the whole county. And I think while you provided that accordingly, I mean, accurately for me. I want to make sure they get the same information so they can keep up with their light section as well and make sure it doesn't get behind. Because it was nothing like having some of my, my constituents go out there and say, well, Commissioner Robinson, light's not up yet. And so what was happening is that you guys would come into the meetings and say that we should be this far alone. My citizens immediately go out there like, well, Commissioner Robinson, there's no lights up here. There's no land hits. It's like, so I think you know where I'm going. Can you make sure we get that, Terry? All right. Thank you. All right. Last question, because again, I know this section tends to be longer and I know the meeting will go faster. Um, uh, Transportation, Lee Road. Uh, yeah, by far that is the largest project, um, in the county. And I'm glad to see that it, it, it's moving along. Um, I heard you say something about, so Chapel Hill will only go from, what, the high school up to Anawaki? Um, how do we get from Anawaki to the equivalent of what Lee Road will cut over at Bomar? How? Did, that means there's a gap. Can, can, can Miguel, can y'all help discern the difference between that? Cause I, I got stuck. Um, obviously Anawaki is south of perhaps where the Bomar Pope connects out. So is there any design work that's helping extend from Anawaki and Chapel Hill up to Chapel Hill and where this thing is supposed to pop out? Can y'all give me some insight on this? Are we falling short?
Uh, yeah, this is Miguel, Commissioner. Uh, the, uh, the overall design of, for widening of, um, Chapel Hill is going to encompass that entire area. However, this particular project was targeting, um, providing turn lanes to a number of subdivisions that were north of the high school. And so now it's been extended somewhat, uh, about a mile's worth. However, it is still, um, it is still not the complete, uh, widening project. That will come later.
I catch it. All right. That, 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 I, you know where I'm going. I'm just laying my breadcrumbs as I normally do to say that we did talk about this. At some point you're going to get there. And so you need to sort of be aware to plan for something that's going to come in the future. So to tie it all together. So no, you're good, Miguel. We'll, we'll probably pick this up in the transportation tomorrow. So I'll, I'll, I'll defer. Uh, Madam Chair, I'm going to yield with that. That's, I'm good enough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, uh, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Guyer?
Commissioner?
Yes. Um, uh, Terry, uh, I would like to ask you about the Highway Five, um, right-hand turn. I have to get my directions here. Uh, this is northbound Highway Five, left turn. I mean, right turn, right there at the old K-Mart Shopping Center. Um, it, you, you're saying it's still in the design phase, right?
Yes, ma'am.
How long does this normally take? Um, if you ever travel Highway Five, especially on the weekends, you will understand where I'm coming from. Half the county that's coming from, uh, the southern end of the, uh, county up to the mall or, or businesses or restaurants or whatever on Highway Five. They're just backed up to Chick-fil-A, waiting to go, uh, around there, uh, to the mall or wherever. Um, and we also have an agreement with the city that they're paying half of it. And I think we have to have it done by twenty-twenty-one, end of twenty-twenty-one. Is that right?
Um, I may defer to Mark Till of that, but I think it's, it's further out than that. It may be twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. Um, but it's not, it's not next year. But it, it is there. You're right.
Mark, do you have an answer?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check on it and I'll get you the exact date. I don't want to throw a date out there that's incorrect, but let me look it up.
Okay. I was thinking it was twenty-twenty-one. But, um, and it's a shame we couldn't have coordinated all this other, uh, construction that's going on at that same intersection.
Yes.
But, uh, that's just the way the government works, I guess. Um, I think I'm going to go out there and, and pave that little lane that they've had dug out for the longest time. And the red lights is hanging up there blocking the existing red lights. The new red lights are blocking the view. And you have to get up under the red lights before you can see whether or not you can turn. It's, it's very dangerous. It's very dangerous. But, um, if there's any way of expediting this intersection, uh, it is, uh, a lot of people avoid going there. I've heard a lot of people, especially in the southern part of the county, just say, we go to Carrollton. We don't want to fool with the traffic. That means sales tax that we're losing. Uh, so, um, if there's any way of expediting this, uh, it seems like it wouldn't be that complex. It's a turn lane. It's a turn lane. Terry, you look like you want to say something.
Well, and I, I'm probably not going to say what you want to hear and Miguel can chime in, but, uh, right now it's difficult. And Miguel and I talked about this at the last staff meeting to probably be hesitant to give you like the, uh, a completion time on the design phase because they still try to work through some unknowns out there as far as utilities and right-of-way, um, impacts and with the, uh, with the, with the developer. So they, I think they need a little bit more time and we'll be able to, uh, kind of pinpoint more of some definitive dates to give you. Uh, but it is, they've got to get, they've got to get beyond that. Uh, and then, uh, they're working through it. I'm, I'm sure Miguel is pushing them as hard as he can push them. But it, it, it is like we, we just talked about with the sidewalk. It's just a process that, that they've got to go through. And obviously with this, they're also working with GDOT, um, uh, hand in hand to get everything coordinated.
Well, the property owner, I'm sure wants to get it, uh, more details in there because they want to sell the lot there. So, uh, they don't know what they're going to be selling until the design plan is, um, is finished. So, Mark, did you find out?
Yes, ma'am. July first, twenty-twenty-two.
July first, twenty-twenty-two. So, um, uh, and that's going to require a lot of red light stuff in the, uh, moving the poles, the electrical holes and everything. So, um, we've got a long ways to go and a short time to get there. So we need to push it as fast as we can. And with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Guyer, thank you so much. And, um, certainly, um, I agree with Commissioner Guyer. Certainly some of these things that we think are quick wins. I'm not going to even use the word quick wins anymore because again, it takes time and I know with the design. So I know you heard her, um, outcry today. If you, if you could expedite it and just see what we could do to put a little pressure on those who are working on the designs and everything to see if we can move this project forward. Thank you. Any other questions from the board before I move on to the next presentation?
Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yeah, just real quick, and I, I want to come back to the revenues. We sort of skipped through that. Um, we're what, in our fourth year, give or take sixteen, so it was seventeen, so it's seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, what, when third, fourth year. And you, you, you hit on a, a point was, we're a little bit ahead of this time last year. This Splosh is making its numbers. I don't want to discount that. I don't politicize numbers. The sky is not falling per se. Right? Congress is working. Right? When everybody went and showed to them place, uh, along with the unemployment, that would mean that people, that seventy percent of the people who drive over to Atlanta were back over here. They weren't spending money in them high-rise buildings and stuff or after-hours cocktail. They kept it over here. Right? Follow the money. We're making the numbers. Right? The numbers don't lie. Right? But I, I look at it as, but it's like a morphine drip. Like, no, this thing's sustainable now. Like, it would be, what we're trying to message is that while we appreciate Congress, it's like, okay, y'all got to recognize it. It's like, okay. Do y'all get it? Congress, they took care of business. Two-point-six trillion. Like, okay, we're trying to hold this thing. We're hoping we can get through this thing. To the locals, like, okay, guys, y'all, look, we giving you a little room. They're taking care of the citizens. Like, okay, but then we still are in where we are. Right? Businesses' views was going along, economics are moving along. Think about, construction is still happening. It's both. It's moving. But please, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're giving up. We're not so polarized in our capacity to be able to look at, like, look at the numbers, guys. Right? But, but again, you kept it all here. Uh, yet, yet we're not necessarily going and spending in other places. It was this sentence. Now we're opening back up. But like Dr. Mima, we're still in phase one now. Right? We're, it, it's still moving. But it's not sustainable by Congress. They're showing you like, okay, this thing is real. Right? They can't keep dropping one to three trillion every six, seven, eight, you know, weeks. You're talking about inflation. Right? We, we, I, I, I get our local, we're concerned about our taxes because it's more immediate. Do y'all see what that three trillion, four trillion is dropping on us? What's it going to be for our grandchildren? See, Congress gets to just print money like, okay, they've kicked the can, let y'all get to it later. We have to take the hit in the locals. So it all streams down to us and I'm, I'm willing to have that conversation. I get it. Right? We, we don't get to print money. I get it. Right? But at the same point, let's give credit where credit is due. That is holding. But what are we doing to plan and, or anticipate sort of like, okay, this ain't going to hold. So I just wanted to make that statement, Madam Chair. Let's not discount the fact that the numbers are holding. We did not miss our Splosh as an indicator. So when people say, well, what happened? Oh, no, we planned that well. Right now, the reason is again, Congress helped, helped us out. If it wasn't for Congress, we'd be in a much worse situation. I just want to yield that, Madam Chair, just so that there's, there's balance in sort of the, the commentary that's come forth. I yield, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Thank you so much, uh, Terry Gable and also David Good. Thank you. The presentation was very enlightening today. You all are doing a lot of good work and so I see a lot of progress being made. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. We're going to move on to our next presentation and, and Board of Commissioners, before I get to our next presentations, I encourage you to look at the approval, uh, to look at the minutes and we will approve accordingly tomorrow. And then it's one item and also the approval of expenses. I ask that you look at your expenses and then we will approve accordingly tomorrow. Uh, with that being said, I will now yield to Ron Roberts and Allison Duncan, uh, for a presentation regarding Highway Seventy-Eight Quarter. And it's just a discussion and a preliminary analysis. With that being said, Ron Roberts, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good morning to, uh, you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, staff and citizens of Douglas County. Yes, I'm going to be, uh, uh, going through this, uh, but I want to introduce Allison Duncan. She's our, uh, uh, senior planner. She was at ARC for many years. Um, as, uh, I just want to say a few things before she gets started. As staff, we've made a concerted effort to kind of spread out our planning projects and grant opportunities across multiple commission districts. Um, couple of examples, uh, we've applied for the Road Enhancement Beautification Council Grant towards Thornton Road. And we've met with several commissioners on the application for the scenic byway one sixty-six, which was identified in our comprehensive plan adopted back in, in twenty-eighteen. What's going to be presented this morning is a thirty-thousand-foot look at Seventy-Eight, AKA Veterans Memorial, specifically from the Lithia Springs to the city of Douglasville. We feel that, and I'm sure that many in the county do as well, that this area has stalled economically, but that there's, uh, great potential for some positive change. While we do have an overlay for this area in our UDC that outlines prohibited uses and lays out some aesthetic guidelines, we also do not get to truly make effective change unless there's some brick and mortar project brought forward, a land disturbance permit, new business, rezoning, et cetera. As staff, we're also aware of the economic challenges facing everyone due to COVID and are sensitive and aware of financial participations at this time. But we see an opportunity to engage and begin dialogue with residents, a visioning search, if you will, and a placemaking for a blueprint of the area going forward. The thought process behind this is that for many years now, the stick or code enforcement has been the dominant control for some of the more unsightly or difficult businesses in that corridor. And then now our department would seek to engage with a more chartered approach, perhaps identifying some future endeavors that the citizens in that area could take advantage of and that the board may support at some future time when it's appropriate. There's no overnight fix to the issues along this corridor. However, there is, uh, some ideas to move positively forward, which Allison's about to present. Like all good placemaking and understanding where we have been and where we are is beneficial before laying track, down the tracks for the future. Uh, I wanted to thank Madam Chair and Commissioner Mitchell, who dedicated their time and input on the presentation. And I'll let Allison go forward with the analysis of that corridor now. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Ron, uh, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity, um, to share some information. I'm going to try to share my screen. Uh, so can y'all see that slide on your screen now? All right. I'm going to just move forward with this. This has been a really interesting project, um, to jump into. Um, we did, as Ron said, look at the entire length of Highway Seventy-Eight. Um, and what we're going to share with you here today is a little bit of information, um, that we have identified in conjunction with the ongoing zoning update. Um, so the first thing that we attempted to do is to, to place the corridor in its proper context, right? So we went back in time a little bit. Um, when, when, when Highway Seventy-Eight was the east-west connector, um, in Douglas County. Um, so before Interstate Twenty, this was basically, uh, the main street for Douglas County for all intents and purposes. Um, and when we really started to put together a timeline of key events along this corridor, um, we realized that a lot of what is represented along Highway Seventy-Eight really goes back to not only the earliest days of Douglas County, but it carries us through to the development of the first generation of suburbs that we have here, um, in the county. And so this corridor saw a lot of really cool, really iconic events, um, over time. And then around nineteen nineties, as Ron had kind of alluded to, development pattern shifted again. Um, and the corridor largely began to settle into what we would call kind of a status quo. Um, so that I think is what we see today. And that's where we tried to pick up the narrative thread. Um, and I just wanted to share this image to underscore, um, that, that is a long corridor. That is a really long stretch of road running east to west. And so we're going to focus on the area mostly around the Lithia Springs end of the corridor. But I just wanted to underscore that a lot of what we're going to share with you here translates very easily um, to the end of the corridor that, that runs through the old, uh, community of Winston in between Douglasville and Billerica. And so where we basically started our analysis was looking at this as a commercial corridor. So what you see here, the parcels in blue are areas that we have currently issued business licenses. And so we looked at the, the nature and the description of those businesses and we compared it, um, to where we have existing commercial zoning. And we also looked at it in context, um, of that, that overlay district that Ron had alluded to. Um, the overlay was put in place a number of years ago and overlays are an amazing tool. Um, they can work slowly at times. And so we wanted to kind of get a, a sort of global picture of what that, that non-residential development was happening there on the corridor. But we also took a minute to kind of back away and analyze the neighborhoods adjacent to that. Um, we particularly see that in this We particularly see that in this part of the corridor, you have a lot of neighborhoods that came online in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies, and that starts to make sense, right? If you think of our timeline, this really was a corridor that saw a lot of that first generation suburban development. And so when you put all of those pieces together, I think kind of the key takeaway that we would want to share with you is this idea that the corridor and the neighborhoods really have to work together to reinforce the viability of this area. So it's not just a conversation about a transportation corridor, it's a conversation about how it evolved over time and how it serves the community adjacent to it. And that being said, we also kind of looked at it in the context of our comprehensive plan, and we really see that the comprehensive plan does support this idea that it's the neighborhoods and the corridor working together. And then finally, in just this initial analysis that we looked at, we took our property values, and this is based on Tax Digest, so we know that the Tax Digest is going to be a little bit below market value. But we took sort of a an area one mile off the corridor, and we looked at the values in that area. And what we see is that about eighty-five percent of those properties have a value of under two hundred thousand dollars. And really about half of those have a value of under a hundred thousand dollars. And so I think that kind of sets up the point where we want to go next with this analysis, which is really how do we make the value commensurate with the potential that we know that we have on this corridor? So what I have here before you are a few recommendations, as we've thought about this, of things that could be undertaken in the short term. These are all actions that can be undertaken by staff with existing staff resources. I think particularly important, we would want to make sure with your blessing that we're having a conversation with those business owners and stakeholders along the corridor. We would want to make sure that we're filling out that existing context, we've shared a little bit with you today, but we would want to make sure that we kind of took that to the next step. We have some really good housing recommendations. In twenty seventeen, y'all may recall that the Bleakley Advisory Group returned a good report to the county, talking about some of the the housing recommendations they would have. And then since then, we've got some strong recommendations coming out of Metro Atlanta Housing Strategy, as well as an analysis of our current zoning codes that ARC has provided through the Community Development Assistance Program. So we think, as I said previously, a lot of this works kind of hand in glove with those zoning revisions that we will start sharing with y'all in the upcoming months. And then I think, as Ron had alluded to, looking at the market opportunities, the placemaking opportunities, and how we could bring some of those things about. So we're really just planning for that viable redevelopment in an incremental way along the corridor. That being said, I'm going to conclude on a couple of other programs that may be of interest to you. What I had shared previously was all things that could be handled by staff with existing resources. But we think that there are some good programs through our state partners and our nonprofit partners that could really enhance the information that we would be able to return about this corridor. So I'm going to pause there and see if you have any preliminary thoughts, questions, or feedback on what we've shared at this time.
Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Allison or either Ron?
No.
No questions, Allison? Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I I'll be quick, I want to acknowledge the fact that you mentioned the corridors, Lithia Springs, all the way up to downtown Douglasville. I'm going to yield to my colleague, Commissioner Mitchell, to provide thought leadership on that, though we probably share, he probably has predominance of it and probably has obviously more wisdom than I do in that area, so I'm going to yield to that. Allison, I've got a question directly for you then, to 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 segment. You mentioned nineteen ninety, I think Ron Roberts mentioned it, you sort of hit it. And that's during a time period which I, you know, came of age here, you know, my entire adult life from nineteen ninety to twenty twenty, thirty years. Right? And and you drove home a whole point that we've moved from property, a rural, a pure rural community, the one that's that began to become more suburban and more dense. And can you validate for us as the thirteenth largest county, aren't we probably the most eighth most dense in the state? And this concentration, so how are you, how does this plan deal with, and to Madam Guy's point earlier, I mean, as you plan, are you are you taking into consideration transportation and flow? Because while I appreciate buildings and vertical, it's mobility is key. Mobility begets economic development. Can you speak on that, Allison, just a little bit? How this, how these efforts will help? And that was a softball lob, I know you can do this, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, and I think, you know, in response to that comment, one of the things I want to make sure that we're kind of looping in our our colleagues in transportation, we do understand that there has been a project on the books to widen. US Seventy Eight has been there for a number of years. My understanding is that it is still in long range and it still doesn't have an identified funding source. So to your point about mobility, infrastructure, that is absolutely key to a corridor like US Seventy Eight. You'll notice, one of the things that we had identified in our timeline was that whole notion of infrastructure, right? The last time we saw a lot of improvements really coming in in the infrastructure space was between the thirties and the seventies, you know? And so I think that, well, we want to be cognizant that we have some long range projects in the books. I I would say that we need to probably have a candid conversation about how long we want to wait for those projects to materialize before we start, you know, kind of coming back down to the ground level and figuring out what are some of those, you know, incremental things that we can do to increase quality of life. I'm going to pause right there and see if that's kind of getting at the at the at the answer that you were, you know, anticipating for that, because I also kind of heard you raise some issues about density, which I'm happy to kind of allude to as well. But I think that would be my key takeaway about mobility is that, as y'all discussed in the previous conversation about the SPOLOX, a lot of these mobility projects come with big price tags. And I would just kind of respectfully suggest that that we could still move ahead with some some good sort of placemaking and some good context sensitive design while we're waiting for the resources to align for infrastructure improvements.
All right, so then my last point to your point, I know we have a comprehensive transportation plan that's in play. Miguel, we'll bring this up tomorrow during our transportation committee. So I I guess I'm making sure that I I try to avoid silos. You got planning zonies over here and they've got their priority, you got transportation over here and they're doing their thing. Like, okay, are y'all talking? Are y'all lining this up? Now, I get sometimes we move like, look, while they're working on this, let's work on our little study and our little plan and our little resource, like, okay, but who's sitting up there aligning this? I'm trusting that the county administrator, you guys are watching this, and so it's more of a, all right, so are we saying that this is now a priority? Now, it could be a sub priority. Now, I I hear Chapel Hill is important, I hear Highway Five is important, I hear Thornton, Lee Road are important, so now I'm hearing Veterans, which I know is important. And to your point, I think it's it's one of those we learned during the two thousand, during the Great Recession, is that we should do studies, we should do research while we're waiting for the big money to come. But I'm I I'm hearing that we're actually focusing on this as a priority. And I I just, perhaps, Commissioner Mitchell, if you've got any comments, if you still out there, I I'd be willing to, I'd love to hear your thoughts on this, because I have no problem if this is really an ask. I mean, it sounds like it's an update, but it sounds like at least an acquiesce, a concurrence to keep moving, so I have no objections to what I'm hearing as far as study is concerned. But I'm I'm looking for my peers, where you're like, okay, so what are we looking at here? So I heard Madam Chair and Commissioner Mitchell were instrumental in framing this coming before us, so can either one of y'all help understand what this is about? I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Mitchell, can you chime in? This is your district, and then I'll just piggyback off you.
Well, I I don't have much to say, Madam Chair, because we've had a nice, long conversation. We've had a nice, long conversation, and the conversation was just as simple as understanding kind of where we are, where we want to go, want to manage expectation, and how great this corridor is, and how we can improve on this corridor. And and take the smaller bites, because the state got an idea of how this corridor should look, what we're going to be doing in five, ten, twenty years, and it probably be longer. So we we had our conversation, which was great, as to where this corridor, what it, not only what it could be, what we're going to make it, but the direction we're going to take and why. So I I I'll just leave it at that, but we we they've explained and we 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 adjusted even this presentation just to make sure kind of what it what we should actually be talking about. So and we know we got a couple of other people that we need to get engaged in this conversation. I mean, a couple of organizations that need to be a part of this conversation to include homeowners and and or the business owners in that corridor to include, we talked about the opportunity zone. So we, there's a lot in this, Madam Chair, that precede even your timeframe as to what's in here that we haven't even had a chance to discuss, but we did. So I'll leave it at that, and I let my my peers kind of chime in where they want to chime in, so I'll I'll yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Certainly, I I echo Commissioner Mitchell again, this is an area, a corridor that has a lot of opportunity and it has a a chance to flourish. I know we, when I spoke with you, Allison, you know, you showed me both you and Ron some information from the nineties. I said, boy, this has been on the books way too long. If nothing else, we could just start just romancing the idea of what it could look like in the future, not saying that it's a priority. It is, but it is certainly something that's much needed. And certainly, just by working with these organizations, it doesn't sound like it's going to cost us anything for you all to get started, you know, based on some of the things, so it's it's not, it's it's cost free. So I I I agree, this it's time to start looking, and the presentation was well done. And Board of Commissioners, do you have any other comments for them, or Ron and Allison? Do you have anything else to add, Ron or Allison?
No, ma'am, just really appreciate y'all's time today, and, you know, we look forward to to beginning that dialogue, and we will be reaching out to the commissioners along this corridor that, you know, that affect this, so we can find some stakeholders and have some discussions with the people that you guys identify.
Okay, thank you, we look forward to another update when you all pull some more information together. Thank you so much, Allison, and thank you so much, Ron. Appreciate your presentation. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to tab number six. I've already mentioned the approval of the minutes for tomorrow, public hearing, we have a public hearing regarding the military rate. Certainly Sabrina Cogburn, who's our Assistant Director of Finance, will present, as well as our county administrator, Mark Till, at the public hearing. We're going to move on to tab number seven, we have grants. Authorization to submit fiscal year twenty twenty Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant JAG application in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. No match is allowed and allow for a thirty day public comment period and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director King, how you doing this morning, Jennifer? You're still on mute. We can't hear you.
Sorry.
Good morning, this is a grant that we apply for and that we've had for a few years. This is the only one in our normal course of business that requires the thirty day period for public comment.
Board of Commissioners, any questions for Ms. King, our director? All right, sounds pretty self explanatory, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to tab number eight, authorization to approve, and it's a business item, and we're going to move to tab number eight, authorization to approve two hundred thousand dollars of CARES Act funding for the Elevate Douglas COVID Nineteen Business Grant. We have our Executive Director of Economic Development, Chris Pompree. Chris, you have the floor.
Good morning.
Can everybody? Can't hear you.
Everyone hear me now? You can?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
So good morning, everyone. We talked to you all a few months ago about the COVID nineteen, the Elevate Douglas COVID nineteen Grant Program. And we have named it now the Elevate Douglas COVID nineteen Business Grant Fund. And so this is a part of our partnership in creating the nonprofit organization for economic development. So we are almost just about ready to go with the with the program. I am going to share this real quick. And I will be brief here. Can everyone see this? Is this visible to everyone?
No, it's not yet, Chris.
Oh, yeah. Still nothing?
No.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll I'll back out and I'll just talk through it. We've been working very diligently with the Chamber, Google, and Switch in pulling all of this together. The purpose of the grant fund, as we mentioned before, is to provide financial support to Douglas County businesses resulting, I mean, who've been financially impacted from the COVID nineteen global health pandemic. We will be providing small business grants up to ten thousand dollars, which is kind of different than what we what we discussed before, as we've worked through some more of the details in trying to make sure we magnify and optimize the opportunity that we have. The grant is set to be launched on August the twenty fourth, that's next week, Monday. And we have set up a a small business review committee that consists of two members of the Development Authority Board, two members of the Chamber Board, and myself and Sarah kind of serving as the the staff liaison to the group. Breezy Straighton will be working on kind of the logistics of the platform. We have a website that will go live later today. It is a website specifically set to support all the businesses. This is where they will, they will get the application for the grant program itself, and they'll be able to get all of the, you know, the eligibility requirements, everything that they need to know about the program. That program website is Douglas County, hold on a second, is Douglas County Small Business dot com. Douglas County Small Business dot com will make sure we send that to you all. Like I said, it should go live later today. If you try and access it right now, you probably will get the, you're probably directed to the Chamber website, but this will be a standalone website, and you'll see the Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership COVID nineteen Business Relief Grant Fund. On that website, as I mentioned, that's where the individuals will app will find the application. We have broken it down into tiers, so there'll be up to two two thousand dollars for sole proprietors, up to five thousand dollars for companies with employees of two to five, up to seventy five hundred dollars for six to ten, and up to ten thousand dollars for eleven to twenty five. On the website, we've got the eligible uses of the funds. We're trying to ensure that everything is in compliance with CARES Act funding. And we know there are some specific requirements there, so we're ensuring that it's meeting those needs, meeting meeting those requirements. In the event that there is an audit, we can track and show where those, how those proceeds were used. The target of the proceeds will be towards re will be reimbursable funds. So we're not looking at what are future funds, because, like I said, we're trying to make sure we adhere to CARES Act proceeds, and that is for, we'll we'll receive receipts for those funds. So we have the eligible uses, the eligibility requirements that are laid out there, similar to what you've already seen. They've got to have a valid business license from Douglas County, city of Douglasville, city of Villareca, or city of Austell, all those, those other two cities within Douglas County. So the only for Douglas County businesses. They have to demonstrate an interruption as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, and that's reflected in the documents that are required. And then the the list, there's about nine different required eligibility requirements that you'll see there. And I apologize that I'm not able to show what I'm looking at right here on the website, but we'll make sure that you can access that. There'll be a certain number of documents that'll be required of the businesses as well. And so we're making the website very clear what's needed and what are disqualifications that to where you cannot apply for the funds. We'll have a a webinar that'll be that'll go live on Monday, which is the day that the application goes live itself, and that'll just be a walkthrough of everything on the application process. We are using a platform called Neighborly. Neighborly is really built for things like this. The Invest Atlanta uses them for all of their loan programs and grant programs. First Sight just started working with them, I know Cherokee is looking at working with them right now, and a host of others. They're based out of Atlanta, their platform is, like I said, is built for grant and loan funds. What it does is it allows us to track the sources of funds and tie them to specific entities and tie them specifically to what that, what those funds went to cover. And so this will be our means of making sure that if you ever have to do an audit, that we have all that information readily handy. That if you ever have to do an audit, that we have all that information readily handy. Um, Neighborly is built, is its platform sits on the Microsoft Azure um uh data centers. And all of the information is secured in that data center. And so we've got um, I guess, the 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 security built around that because we are collecting sensitive information. Um, that, um, make sure there's anything else I needed to cover. Um, we did send postcards out um on Friday. We went to every um licensed business in the community, so those postcards went out. Um, the digital uh marketing will start this week. Uh, making sure that it'll be on Facebook, all the social media platforms will get it in Douglas County Happenings as well. All the the social media outlets via the City of Douglasville as well. We'll make sure that we're promoting this as much as we possibly can. Uh, those businesses should have started receiving those postcards hopefully today. Uh, we know how the mail system is. It's a little backed up right now, but we we wanted to give them time that, you know, before the program launches. One change we did make is that it's not a first come, first serve. It was a kind of a built-in lottery system that we'll be using. That way, uh, businesses don't have to rush to try and get a an application in on the first day. We want to make sure they have a very complete application, all the information is accurate. And then of the complete ac- applications with all the required documentation, then they'll be pulled, um pulled from that uh database and we'll start awarding from there. So I think that covers everything. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, uh Executive Director Pomfrey. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Chris Pomfrey? Comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
All right, all right. So uh, it it, thank you, Chris, for for the presentation. Please give us a copy of that, you know, we 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 were you. The only thing with this whole Zoom world is that, you know, we're we're used to paper still. Papyrus is still important to conducting business. So I mean, you get it. Send it to us when you can, please, uh, so we can have that. All right, so let me make sure I, and really, I'm I'm being reflective of my peers. So let's see. Elevate versus empower. Let me, let me make sure I get this right. So now the Chamber is wanting us to um um support an initiative. That I get it, you guys. Well, I get it, but I don't forget. Um, make sure I get this right. So. A program that will support the community. Chris, ask me, answer this question. What's the difference between the City of Douglasville and Douglas County? How do you separate the two? And if I'm putting in, let's say, two hundred thousand, how do I ensure that that amount of money goes to? My constituents and unincorporated? How how will you balance that? And then one of the things that we've always, we struggle with is economic development that concentrates in one area versus another, right? How how will you ensure a relative spread? I'm not looking for absolute, but how do we ensure this money and this committee is not concentrated in certain areas? Start with that question. How how do you, how do you avoid that?
So part of the 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 beauty of the the Neighborly platform is it allows us to dive down um deeply into the questions that we ask and how we pull. Um, pull information. So when an applicant goes in to apply, they will check a box. Did you apply for your business license in the City of Villarica, Austell, Douglas County, or Douglasville? And we can pull from that. We also have each source of funds separated. Um, and they're separated within the platform. And so then we can go and we can run for City of Douglasville businesses. And apply in City of Douglasville funds to City of Douglasville businesses. So the 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 pools of funds, you've got, like I mentioned, the you have the Development Authority, the Chamber, um, Switch and Google. So those are, I guess, the the ones that are broadly used for all, excuse me. One second.
You're on it.
I was snacking on popcorn, so um that all things, um, those funds are for any business within Douglas County. And so recognizing to try and make sure as best as possible that we target City of Douglasville funds and City of Douglasville businesses. Douglas County funds and Douglas County businesses. That's how we'll work on the separation of the two is by pulling based off of where their licenses are.
All right, all right, I'm gonna shift gears. Do we know that that's just probably for the general public, those who are paying attention? So if I say two hundred thousand dollars divided by, what, ten thousand dollars is what, twenty? Did I do the math right?
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty businesses. And that that's all relative. That's at the top end. I I like, actually like your strata now. I I I think that you guys have come a little bit further along. I'm glad to hear the infrastructure you're using, Neighborly. Well done. You're you're moving along. You're you're actually in a place where you're actually ready to do this versus a few months ago, there was nothing there. So I I'm I'm glad to hear that you guys have moved along. Um, but still, twenty businesses. Twenty businesses, and and I'm sure I think at one time we said we've got, what, four thousand unincorporated businesses? So it's it's all relative, right? I mean, it shows a good faith effort uh that we're we care, that we see people that are out there that are being impacted, those small businesses. But but one of the things that I did ask for, and I think um Director Tiffany Store Stanley, she uh, I think she did, no, I don't think. She delivered to me what I asked for is tell me the number of businesses that were impacted by PPP. The number of businesses within Douglas County that actually got grant um grant awards. And I've got a copy of that. And my peers should have gotten a copy of that. They didn't. They will make sure they get a copy, but that is something that I asked specifically. And hopefully, Chris, you've taken a look at that. And it's typically the the normal who's who. This is public record, but it's the normal who's who of Douglas County that gets. It's just the normal who's who. And so I'm for the people who really have a need out there that 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 may not be part of our. Mailing list, who who are not in our immediate circle, but yet they they've been here all along. And they may not just be ass-plugged in, they not may not come to the Chamber meetings and my my concern is that. This funding could potentially go to people who just, look, they don't hang out with you. They may not, but that don't mean that they don't exist. And and I've always had that problem, the normal, I just, it it's like a who's who. It's like, you know, and I how do we ensure the people who really need it? Get it. And I'm okay. You don't have to let let that go. But I think you see what my concern is, is just, okay, guys, y'all got this little committee that's going to award these ten thousand dollars to these twenty people on behalf of Douglas County proper. And how do I know that it's just not friends of friends versus uh people who may not even, you know, hey, look, I've been here all along and. I didn't know to plug into that, but how do you ensure I I at least get considered? It's okay. Um, I'm gonna let that go. It's more of a statement. And I'm gonna close with this. And and again, I'm messaging. Um, I still think that education is key here. And since we're at, we're asking, and I'm I'm already made this known, my condition of support cannot be done without education. As opposed to awarding twenty people, I'd rather educate four thousand business owners. Or 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 perhaps, um, you know, twenty thousand aspiring business owners. Um, I I think education is key, helping people understand business plans, uh, helping them. Um, that that's a proper use of the money, uh, or or at least a part of it. I know you guys are working on, we've got to come up with a business plan or a plan to spend COVID money. You know, we said that this is part of it. But to just give, to to give away fish, not teach people how to fish, was contrary to what I believe in this one area. I, as you know, I've been a strong proponent of entrepreneurship, this one area. And to give them the money, I've given them an instruction behind that, or to, either you can be in the game. And you want to sort of re- recalibrate, or you like, look, I don't have a job, but I need to create a job. I need to create an opportunity. There's, where's the education behind this? And so for my support for this, you have to have uh an overlay of um an online education. Um, I I think that's key. I mean, there's plenty of platforms that are out there that like, okay, guys, I may not get this grant. But you, here's a way in which you go pitch money. Here's a way to go raise money. Here's a way in which to get in the game. And so I think we fall short. Just by, you know, feeling good about ourselves and I gave somebody a plate, I I just gave you a plate. Right? I gave you a grant. I I don't think we're doing right by just giving away this grant. I I think it falls short. So that being said. I'm gonna let that go. Um, Chris, you you go ahead.
I would, I I would certainly agree with you if 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 this was the only thing that we were doing, which it's it's not. This is just. Um, this is an opportunity for us to do, to to fill a need and serve a need, a financial need that, you know. Hundreds of businesses are being impacted by um and ensuring that the the proceeds are only going to Douglas County businesses and not going. You know, to the broader um national um pool of of businesses that are out there. So and 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 the points that you made are are definitely things that um our committee has discussed. And so just so that um you know, you know, some of these are, you know, individuals who you all have appointed, you know, to the Development Authority Board. Um, and and are here representative of the community and have the the community's best interest at hand. So um, one of the 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 things that is kind of happening simultaneous to this. Is we started um with our Small Business and Entrepreneurial Consultant Finding Next. Um, they started their work uh last month um with the with the goal of concluding um their work uh in October. Um, where they'll be making their presentations to the Development Authority Board and the Chamber Board. And so what their role is to do is to kind of create that pipeline. Utilizing some of the things that you that you all have funded in the past with the uh incubator study. Taking all the different pieces that go into building an entrepreneurial ecosystem in Douglas County, uh, they're working on that. For the companies that do not, those that do and do not get awarded, um, this gives us the opportunity to connect with those businesses in in in. Present to them the full um platform of of resources that do exist. Um, so, you know, this this pandemic is, this has been something that's been in the works um all along. We had already planned. To bring on this small business consultant. We actually started the um, the development of the RFP back in January. Uh, and so, you know, we started, like I said, a ahead of this, but this is not just, we're only doing this. This is an opportunity to ensure that we're providing all the resources that exist to Douglas County businesses.
All right, well, um, if this is an, is this a discussion or this is an actual ask? My question is, are you asking us to award two hundred thousand dollars tomorrow to this program? Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
All right, so if this is going to be on the agenda for tomorrow, mine is going to come with conditions uh specific to um obviously education. So that's, we we can work on that between now and tomorrow. To be clear, if if for my support, it it has to be part of it. So um, just to clarify, um, and I yield the floor, ma'am chair. I'm good enough. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Vice Chairman. We have Commissioner Guide. I see your hand on the computer. Commissioner Guide.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Chris, uh, you said that we had four thousand unincorporated. Um, or somebody said it. I don't know if you did.
Charos.
Uh, vendors. Uh, and one of the requirement is that they had to apply for a business license. Usually business licenses are paid by by now. Uh, should it not be people that have actually paid for a business license this year?
Yeah, if if I, if if I, when stating that, it was, we're ma- basically saying when you got your business license, you know, which jurisdiction did you check? But the business would have to have been in business prior to um the pandemic. So they would have to been in business at least a year. So not necessarily like, oh, let me go apply to get into.
They would have had to renew. Maybe that's the word I should say. They would have had to renew.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, their business license by now. What I'm saying, and I I kind of go along with uh Kelly, Commissioner Robinson, that um. We want to make sure it gets to active businesses.
Exactly.
Uh, not, not people that's already, you know, taking the shingle down and they've left. Um, you know, we sometimes we're quick to uh just make uh decisions like this. Uh, although this is uh coming from the CARES Act, that's from the federal government, it's still taxpayer money. And and we fund the taxpayers' money whether uh, I mean, the uh federal government, whether we like to uh admit to it or not. But if it, there's four thousand unincorporated um vendors. What about the city of Douglasville where most of the businesses are, the the stores are?
Yeah, I I think the total number is around seven thousand, um, seven thousand, between seven and seventy five hundred businesses. So actually, the, you know, there's actually more in un- unincorporated Douglas than there are in the City of Douglasville. Um. So the the si- go ahead.
I was gonna ask, are you requiring to look at their bank statement or something to see that they have been working?
Yeah, so.
And what about the the, so so proprietors? Say, uh, someone that does lawn work, okay? He's out there every day and he's getting paid for it. Is is he gonna qualify for this grant?
So the el- the eligibility requirements that you do have to have a valid business license in one of the four jurisdictions. Um, you have to demonstrate business interruption as a result of the pandemic. And so that shows in the required documents that that are, that need to be provided. So if you have a completed W nine form, tax ID and all of that, um, itemized summary of eligible expenses. Um, a twenty nineteen profit and loss statement and a twenty twenty profit and loss statement through June thirtieth. Um, and then the copy of of the business license and um the W three summary or IRS Form nine forty one. Uh, prior to March thirteenth, that shows the number of employees that they have. So there's documentation that they have to provide for that.
Okay, and what about chain restaurants and stores? Are they eligible for this?
You have to be a Douglas County-based business. Now, if you happen to be a franchise owner based in Douglas County. Then um, believe um that that individ- that company is eligible, but if you are just a a a, an owner that has thirty chains across. You know, Atlanta, no, you would not be eligible.
Okay, and uh, did you say whether or not they would have had to, they've gotten to have an active business license?
Correct, yeah, valid, yeah, a valid business, a valid business license today. And would have had to been in business at least one year prior to the shelter in place.
Okay, well, it just seems like uh if you're talking about seven thousand with Douglasville and and Douglas County. And you're also including um Villareca and uh, did you say Austell? I assume you did.
Yeah.
Um.
Both of those gotta be very small, um, just because there's not, there's only a handful of businesses coming from those.
I know it, but uh, the the payout is getting smaller too. So will it really, will it really benefit that many people in our businesses?
Yeah, it's it's one of the things that we definitely struggled with, you know, you know, if you look at, you know, Cobb County, they got a fifty million dollar grant and, you know, they they had their. Their funds came in a different way. Um, the folks in Forsyth have two million dollars um that they're using um from CARES Act funds. So everyone just kind of has different pools. So we're just trying to use what we have, um, you know, to to make as much impact as we possibly can. Do I wish we had two million dollars? Yes, but we don't.
So this, this is in the CARES Act, but it's specific just for this purpose? Is that what you're saying?
So, so what we have, so between Douglas County, what we're talking about for you all is two hundred thousand dollars. The City of Douglasville has already said, you know, talked about their two hundred thousand dollars going in. So four hundred thousand would be CARES Act funds. And then two hundred thousand are non-CARES Act funds. Um, and those are funds, like it's, like I mentioned, from the Development Authority, Chamber, Google and Switch.
So um, is the City of Villareca or Austell, are they paying anything into it?
I know, ma'am.
Are they reaping? The businesses are gonna reap from it, but they're not gonna, the city's not contributing?
Uh, no, ma'am. And we didn't.
Seems like we're borrowing from Peter to PayPal is 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 the only thing. Uh, but um. Well, I guess that that answers most of my questions, but it it just seems like it's a, just a drop in the bucket. Now, the uh federal government, um, if. Now, the uh, federal government, um, if, if the House is, comes back in session, they, they've been on recess. I don't know that this, this next uh, payout or uh, COVID payout is going to include any more uh, of the PPC, PPE?
PPP, uh-huh.
Uh-huh, do you?
Yeah, we, n- none of us knows. Um, and I, I think that's kind of where, you know, we were, I think where we were last time is like, you know, what's gonna happen, you know, on this next, this next round and um, yeah, we, we don't, we have no idea what, what's gonna happen.
Well, what if we do this and then the federal government comes down and does it again? So should we go ahead without at least giving um, since uh, the House has been called back out of recess? And they've been asked to come back to Washington? Should we not wait on them to see what they're gonna do?
Like I said, you know, we, you, you very well could do that. Um, our, our goal is to still go forward and launch on the twenty-fourth. Um, and we'll launch with the two hundred thousand that we have today. Um, I believe the city of Douglasville is, has committed their two hundred thousand. Um, and we're making sure that we are uh, acting accordingly with the CARES Act. Um, we're um, the use of funds from the CARES Act. Uh, so we're, we'll, we'll um, appr- um, appropriately with that. They haven't received their funds, so it might be like a round two that actually happens. Um, but we're gonna proceed with the two hundred thousand that we have today, starting on Monday.
Okay, with that, I yield back, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the board, I'm gonna move on. We're a little tight on time, I'll see you Commissioner Carthen, you popped up. There you are, Commissioner Carthen. We can't, we can't hear you. We can't hear you. You okay? Okay. Can you hear me, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, I, for some reason, we couldn't hear Commissioner Carthen. Let me see if she's, okay, Commissioner Carthen, are you there? I believe you told me to move on, if, if I can always come back to it. All right, Chris, thank you, thank you so much for your presentation this morning. I'm gonna move on to tab number nine. Authorization to approve a contract with West Publishing Corporation for the purchase of the West Law Research and Software in the annual amount of two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final legal review. Valerie Gordon, are you here, Attorney Gordon, are you on the? Mark, do you want to take this for Attorney Gord- Gordon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I was on a different page. So uh, Ms. Gordon has uh, so it's sort of like LexisNexis. So all the judges have this software to look up uh, court cases, things of that nature. And they don't have any more open positions on their license. So this is a new license for juvenile uh, court, juvenile public defender.
Okay, okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item. We have the LexisNexis is pretty popular. It gives, it's certainly a large um, landscape of information for um, for our elected officials and our, the tax commissioner as well. We're gonna move on to tab number ten. Authorization to approve a right-of-way easement for Greystone Power Corporation in order to run power to the new concession standard Bill Art as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all the, all related documents. Director Gary Dukes, good morning.
Good morning, Gary.
Good afternoon.
Uh, you said it, uh, Madam Chair, it's just to allow Greystone the right-of-way so they can run power to our new uh, concession restroom building at Bill Art Park. Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you so much, board, if we don't have any questions, um, or comments, we're gonna move on to the next tab. The next tab is number eleven. Authorization to approve a right-of-way easement for Georgia Power in order to run an underground line to set the needed transformer for the new senior center as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Duke?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, once again, this is for Georgia Power to run power to our new Lithia Springs Senior Center.
Okay, any questions from the boards? Sounds pretty self-explanatory and thank you for moving these projects along, Director, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to tab number twelve. Our recommendation of the new senior center name. Dr. Gil Kress, good morning, uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners and citizens. As you can see, based on this Flos update, much progress has been made on the new senior center. We are excited at that progress and twice as enthusiastic um, about its completion and look forward to the day when we can take full advantage of all it has to offer. So we are looking forward to that. In anticipation of the opening in June twenty twenty, a stakeholders committee consisting of nine community members was formed to provide suggestions regarding programming, design and valuable insight from an older adult perspective for the new senior center. During their July twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting, there was open discussion about naming of the new center. Stakeholders were provided an opportunity to provide their recommendations and suggestions. Those suggestions were presented to members of the Park and Recreation Committee. And I'm going to try to share my screen. Let's see here. Let's see. It says my screen sharing is disabled. So um, recommendations for the new senior center. We have three names that were brought forth. Those names are South Sweetwater Senior Activity Center, Lithia Springs Senior Center and Sweetwater Active Center for Seniors. So those are the three most favorable names for the board's consideration. That's, that's.
That's it.
Would you like me to repeat those, Madam Chair, or?
You, yeah, you can, once again for the board, and then we will.
Okay, South Sweetwater Senior Activity Center, Lithia Springs Senior Center and Sweetwater Active Center for Seniors.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, do you have any comment or anything you would like to add to the discussion? Or do you have any, any um, suggestions or would like to determine which one we would like to move forward with in terms of the name? And I certainly want to yield to uh, Commissioner Mitchell, District uh, One. And also he is the, he is the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, Chairman of Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Mitchell, I ask that you lead off and kind of give us an idea of what your thoughts are.
Well, Dr. Gil Kress, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gil Kress has made a great presentation, has made uh, uh, basically the recommendation based on the uh, names that she went from the uh, the first name to the third uh, name. And I think the first name is actually what we're actually recommending from the uh, Parks and Rec Committee. Uh, outside of that, I mean, it's just, it's a name and I, I don't think, I think the name that uh, being stated. And Dr. Gil Kress, could you give me that name once again so we can kind of hear it for the, for the record, that, the, the first name, not the other two?
The first name is South Sweetwater Senior Activity Center.
Right, and that would be the one that I would like to see us move forward with. But again, I uh, will yield to the co-chair of the Parks and Rec Committee and also to um, this board to decide on if that's the name we'd like to move forward. But we need to kind of move with because um, from my understanding, Mark, you might want to verify this, but I think we need to kind of move on this because we need to start, we're at that stage where we need to place something in writing on the building itself and start moving with the building being named as such, so we can move forward, all that correct?
Yes, sir, we've got the, the sign that goes in front of the building that is uh, pending this name and the uh, plaque inside.
That's correct, so with that being stated, so we can kind of stay on course and get this thing up and running, which we're kind of moving a lot faster than we anticipated. So I think we're ready to move forward with that. But that, uh, as stated, that would be the name that we will recommend. Outside of that, I'll yield the four, to my colleagues.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Um, Board of Commissioners, anyone else have any comments? Uh, I, I concur with the name and I'll just add my two cents, I concur with the name that has already been brought forth. Um, Vice Chairman Robinson, you, would you please chime in so we can move on to the next?
Yeah, I, I, obviously I'm gonna yield to whatever, uh, a stakeholder committee wants that area to be. I mean, obviously, I'm quite sure that uh, my citizens weighed in. So if that's what's come up through the committee and that's what's being presented, um, I'm just gonna leave it at that and say as long as they're pleased, I'm pleased, so I yield.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Carthen, you have any input?
I think she's still having issues with being connected. I, I don't see her on.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I see, Mark, is she, is she on? I don't think she is. Don't see her.
Okay.
Give me one second, just want to check just to verify, but no, I think she's having some connectivity issue, so.
Okay, maybe she'll be on in a second. District Four Commissioner Anne Jones-Guydo, you have any input or concorps?
Well, I, I prefer the Lithia Springs because that tells everybody exactly where it is, so. But I'll go along, it's not my district, so.
Okay. Well, I, I think our other center is Woody Fife, so it definitely does not tell anyone where it is. So I believe this is probably what this, this name is what the stakeholders wanted, so.
Well, it was one of them. It was, there was three names submitted and that's why I said Lithia Springs.
Yeah, Lithia Springs.
Okay.
Initially, when it was brought forth to me, Commissioners, well, I said Lithia Springs, you know, prior to this. But certainly after listening to what the stakeholders agreed upon, I just said, I concur. Sweetwater, I mean, South, South Sweetwater, I want to make sure I say.
See, you already got it wrong. You already got it wrong, if you'd said Lithia Springs, everybody'd know what you're talking about. I yield back.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell, our Chairman of Parks and Recreation.
As you always, I, I hope you guys understand, South Sweetwater has a, has a meaning, a name, a location, if you're looking for the location. Now, I just know that we are used to saying Lithia Springs because that's kind of how we initiated this. That was the whole uh, uh, initiation of Lithia Springs as we went through the building process. But South Sweetwater, uh, Dr. Gil Kress, you correct me if I'm wrong, that has significance to it based on the location as well, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so that, that is a location, but it's just that I, I get Commissioner Guyer, you're used to saying Lithia Springs because Lithia Springs is where it is. It is actually in Lithia Springs, absolutely. But it is a part of the South Sweetwater layout, so same difference, it's just a play on words. However, this is kind of the committee and the committee decided on, upon, you know, even though it went through the stakeholders and everybody else. But I think the name, uh, what we got, I think it's gonna be a great name and I think we'll, we'll be proud of it in the end. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you again, Dr. Gil Kress, for a job well done. Uh, and we got a lot more work to do though, because we, we, you know, the stakeholders got a lot more work to do to kind of continue this thing because we're on the programming side of it. And uh, I think, you know, we, we, we're doing a great job at that, so uh, outside of that, I'll yield, thank you.
Okay, thanks, thank you so much, uh, both Commissioner uh, Mitchell and also Commissioner Guyer. Um, with that being said, clerk, please make sure you, uh, make sure you obtain the correct name from uh, Dr. Gil Kress and then we will make sure that it's uh, legitimate tomorrow on our, if it rolls into the consent agenda or even if it's a new business item, I, I would love to see it as a consent agenda item. So I hope you have it, clerk. All right. Oh, there you are, hey.
Thank you so much for bearing with me. May I obtain the floor for a second?
Yes, you may.
Thank you so much. Uh, I was wondering if Dr. Gil Kress could have given us the actual account of votes for the, for the names? Did she have that with her?
And, and I'll, and I'll chime in there for you though, just, I apologize. We, we decided to, based on everything that we've kind of sent out in the timeline, what we did, the numbers were so, so small to where it, what, it didn't kind of come through as we thought it would because we didn't get the response time that we had and we didn't have the timeframe based on what we're dealing with, uh, Commissioner Carthen. So we decided to kind of stay away from that and just come up with the, the, the layout based on the, the committee and everybody else, so.
So, so my question in that would be, uh, what is the timeframe? And Commissioner Mitchell, you may not know this, but uh, for our county administrator, what is the timeframe in order to get a plaque or a name um, for the center done? What would be the timeframe in getting that signage up?
So Commissioner Carthen, we're ready to proceed on both of those. We have both of them on hold. So the contractor is ready to start the uh, the sign and James is ready to order the plaque.
What would be the timeframe? What is the initial timeframe? Is it thirty days, is it forty-five days, is it seventy-two hours? Once we say this is the name, what is the timeframe, is my question?
Oh, um, as far as the sign goes, I do not know. They'll have to fabricate it, but we've got to have the name before we can order the sign. The plaque usually takes a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks, okay. So my question is, if it's between South Sweetwater and Lithia Springs, why can't we do a quick celebrate Douglas or a quick uh, I think it's Douglas Happenings on the Facebook page, I always get that confused, to allow for the citizens who are actually going to fund this? I mean, although this is Flos dollars, the citizens will actually be funding the programming and everything else that will make up uh, this, this center. So why can't we put it for a vote for the citizens for the next twenty-four hours? Will that timeframe prohibit us from still moving in a timely manner?
Okay, Madam Chair, can I chime in on that one?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Mitchell up. I know Commissioner Carthen has the floor, but I just want to make sure she's okay with you chiming in.
I am, yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you, Madam, I mean, Commissioner Carthen, but here, here's where we are. Because of, I, I think you were at the last meeting, because of the time, the timing of this, we were already uh, behind the gun of actually having a name, which we should have had it before our last meeting. So that timeframe was kind of lapsed based on the mere fact of the timeframe we gave Dr. Gil Kress to try to move this through so we can kind of at least get to a consensus of a name. So I, I think based on my conversations with not only Mark, the contractors and others, we should have had something on the books probably several months ago to have, to keep them moving forward. However, the citizens and, and others did have a chance in actually having some input in this. Uh, that's why we ended up where we are. So now we didn't do the whole celebrate Douglas, no we didn't. However, um, I think based on timing and Mark, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the signage is kind of on hold. But I think if we decide to wait till another meeting, we'll be off keel to try to have a vote and then come back with the, the signage, you know, even using those two names that Commissioner Carthen mentioned earlier, we, we'll be way off and probably be behind the eight ball even further, correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Actually, the contractor's ready to start now, so.
Right.
He's on hold.
So Commissioner Carthen, I, I understand your concern. I mean, I think it would have been an ideal layout, but I think due to time and timing, um, I think we had to make a decision even at our last meeting that I pushed Dr. Gil Kress to have me something back, or at least the committee back. But I want to say the eleventh, they don't quote me on these dates as to why we had to have it ready for this meeting and have a decision made by this meeting, so these guys won't, you know, we won't, you know, slow this thing down based on a name and anything else, so. Commissioner Carthen?
I, I hear your explanation. I again will stand where I am in that you should put it out there for people to vote on and it can still be an agenda item. We do meet within the next week. And if you, if you put it out there right now, uh, Director Teal, for people to vote and close it down, or not you, Director Teal, but the communications team in general, if we put it out there now for the community to vote, you still will get it back in time enough for us to put it on the consent agenda. If we put it out there for the next four hours, if we put it out there for, you know, until six o'clock this. If we put it out there for the next four hours, if we put it out there for, you know, until six o'clock this afternoon, you still can get a consensus from the others within the community. So I don't think it's that hard pressed that we can't put it out there to get a general consensus since it was those two names and no one could really come to, even the focus group or the committee that we had couldn't come to a hard decision. But that's where I am.
Okay, so, so, so Mark, that's not a problem. I don't think that's not, that's not a bad idea. But I think what's gonna happen though is this, Mark, if we can get Rick to pull this off in this kind of a timeframe. But I think on the agenda, by the end of the day, for sure, we need to probably have a decision made that way so the consent agenda will reflect the name. So I don't have a problem with that. I think that's okay if that's what she's speaking of, of actually, you know, trying to put something out there for a quick minute to see what kind of response we'll get. Mark, I just don't know Rick's timing to pull off something like that to see what kind of response we'll get.
We can get that out there and we can actually do it until tomorrow and just put this on his new business or old business tomorrow, whichever way that falls in and then add the name at that point.
No, no, let's put it on the consent agenda as we were planning to do so. And hopefully by the end of today, we will hopefully have some kind of a feedback that will respect Commissioner Carthon's ideals and hopefully by then, and we'll huddle up, you know, by the end of today. So that way tomorrow, the consent agenda will reflect the actual name based on the end of today. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Carthon, I get your point, we can do that.
Wait, Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, let me, all right, let me make sure I get this right. So did, did, did the, we were presented with three options, so I heard. Am I being told that I can't vote on one of them? And that we're gonna go into what's being expressed? What did I just hear? Because I mean, is it more, is it more you're asking me to vote on something? Are we waiting for the influence? I'm just curious, again, I'm a bystander on this, but I gotta, I can't let my voice go away. So am I being presented by staff? Staff presented something to us, to Board of Commissioners. That was the presentation. I heard three options. But what I'm hearing, the collusion that there really isn't three options, there's really what the committee is saying. I'm like, which one is it? Don't present three options for me to vote on if in fact we're being told this is sort of what we're going with, which I'm okay. But you know, you know how I am about that, like, let's be clear. Now, I'm also hearing that we wanna go forth to broaden the community. That's fine. I just wanna keep this honest, when we come in tomorrow, that we're clear. We don't have to vote, we don't have to respond to me. I'm just, what I just heard was, well, which one is it? But I get where y'all are going and again, this is not my committee. But so tomorrow, to your point, Commissioner Mitchell, let's be very clear. And if it's in the consent agenda, let it be done. I don't wanna have a debate or, you know, taking positions within consent agenda. So let's just be clear, I ask. I yield, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon and also Commissioner Mitchell. Certainly, it sounds like Commissioner Mitchell has given a directive to the Communications Department to move forward with the, I call it a poll, to determine which one. And Commissioner Mitchell, you want all three names listed as the ones that Commissioner, I mean, that Dr. Gilchrist read off?
No, Lithia Springs and the South Sweetwater Senior Activity Center.
Okay.
And by the end of the day, me and Mark will kinda huddle up and tell you guys what the end results are. And that way, he'll know from that perspective with Lisa, what name to put on the consent agenda for this single layout. Hopefully that will figure out, Commissioner.
If you ask somebody to do something they didn't do, you'd have a fit.
Turn you.
I don't want him to see me, so I'm like, what?
Hello? You need to turn your phone off, okay.
Showing my video, I don't want him to see me. Like, I got the video cancelled out, so why is it showing my face?
We need someone to mute, please.
Mute, mute, yes, thank you.
Hey, hey, TJ, mute everybody and let everybody unmute themselves. There you go. Or you don't. Mark, who has that control? There we go.
I think they're muted now.
They're muted now, okay, cool. So, Madam Chair, back to, back to the initial conversation. So that we can get a clear, get a clear understanding on what's gonna happen tomorrow. Mark and I will huddle up today at the end of the day and Lisa will put on the agenda out of the two names on the poll that we'll put up today. And we'll determine what that name will be based on the poll that we get today. It will either be Lithia Springs and/or, not and/or, or South Sweetwater Senior Activity Center. So, and that will, and Lisa, do you kinda get what we're saying, what we're doing basically? So you'll get the final results and see what that is. And that's what we'll consentably vote upon tomorrow.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay, okay, all right.
The agenda goes, the agenda goes out about four o'clock today, so that would be the deadline.
Sounds good. And we'll have something marked today by four o'clock for Lisa.
Okay.
I yield, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move on board. We've pressed a little bit for time. Let's move on to tab number thirteen, Authorization to Advertise for a Public Hearing to Consider Amending the Douglas County Code of Ordinances to Adjust Package Retail Sunday Alcohol Sales of malt beverages and wine to begin eleven a.m. and end at twelve midnight pursuant to the House Bill eight seventy-nine, which will go into law on August third, two thousand and twenty. Manager Roberts, Ron Roberts?
Hello again, Commissioner, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, it's, item is as written. House Bill eight seventy-nine has passed August third. We would like to work with Lisa Watson and the staff to put a public hearing amended by ordinance amendment process, the eleven a.m. to twelve midnight for the sale of retailers of malt beverages and wine for Douglas County. So this would be an item that we would wanna change our ordinance for and go through that process. So that's the ask right now.
Okay, any questions from the board? Not, I'm gonna move on. All right, thank you so much, Ron. Tab number fourteen is Authorization to amend participant contributions from, for the ACCG Retirement Services to Find Benefit Plan and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Perry, I think we just visited this last week. You must have, you having a correction or?
No, no correction. I'm just working with ACCG Retirement Services to get the necessary paperwork. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and to the Board of Commissioners, to our citizens. This is a fairly routine and common modification that's made to the master plan document. We have the authority, or you all have the authority as the board, to change that contribution rate as you see fit. So all I would need is just the exact percentage that you would like and, you know, I've been given that amount. So we're just waiting on paperwork now and once we receive that, we'll forward that to you. We don't have to wait until the paperwork comes in to make that adjustment. We would just let them know what to, what date it will become effective on and then, then we can move forward.
Okay, thank you so much, Board. Commissioners, any comment? Commissioner Guyder? Commissioner Guyder?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to push on my butt and say. Frederick, this is for the employees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But everybody that is under the retirement, the defined benefit plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is, what is the rate? I'm sorry.
The, the current rate contribution for full-time employees is five percent.
And you, we're talking about raising it up to what?
Eight percent.
Okay, so that is a three percent.
Increase.
Increase in contribution, but three percent reduction in their pay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you have any figures out there as to how, how this is gonna affect the employees? Dollar-wise? We know percentage-wise.
Percentage-wise, well, that would be a three percent reduction of their base salary. I could find that amount out for you, Commissioner. What, what that would mean is in terms of our overall payroll. But that would be a three percent decrease to their take-home pay.
Would you please talk about the deficit that we always have every year for the defined benefit plan? And also any plans to get away from it? I thought something was gonna come down from the benefits committee. I remember somebody saying, we got some good news coming down from the benefit committee. Is this the good news?
Well, no, it's not, it's not the good news. We actually have a benefits committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday of this, of this week. So we haven't had an opportunity to, to, to look over this proposed increase. The deficit, it probably would be better for the finance department to comment on the deficit to give you some exact figures. But this will, we, you know, the retirement plan is one of our more expensive benefits that we provide for our employees and this will help offset some of the costs that we've, we've incurred over the years. This hasn't changed, if I'm not mistaken, since possibly two thousand nine, two thousand ten. The, the percentage went from three percent to five percent back then. So this has, this remained at five percent for a number of years.
Well, it's just gonna hit all the employees. You know, on the surface, it sounds right, but then again, when we're also talking about furloughs on top of it, it doesn't sound too good to me. And I, I thought, of course, anybody in the retirement plan should be paying enough to, you know, even it out to where the county's not picking up everything. But is there any plans to get away? Everybody has done away with defined benefit plans. The 401K, a lot of people are going to that when you come onboard for, now, we can't change it for the people already there. I'm talking about future. Have y'all talked about changing it over like the state of Georgia did several years back? They changed it over to where they got away from their retirement plan over to a 401K. So everybody's paying what they want. Are they, they're paying a certain percentage as they come in and they know that. This, this is something, this is a hard hit for our employees with the, on top of furloughs. I think they were, we, somebody was talking about ten furlough days next year. This is hard hit, three percent and then the furloughs too. And we haven't really talked about, does it apply to public safety or not? So as far as the furloughs go. But is there any way to tier this? Maybe add one percent or one and a half percent and then maybe look at it next year and see? I know that our, we're gonna have a lot of people retire because of the sunset law in twenty-one, not law, but rule. In, in two thousand and twenty-one, we just heard that our fire chief is gonna retire this year. So we need a plan going forward because we're just digging our hole bigger, is what I'm thinking. And we, we need to have a differ, we need to go with what is out there. That's more friendly both to the employee and the employer. But I hate to hit them with something this big. This is three percent and then furlough days. So I think we need to think about this one.
Okay.
I'd like to maybe watch your committee meeting tomorrow and see what you said and everything. But that's gonna be after, no, it's not. We have our night meeting, don't we? I'd like this move from the consent agenda and put on as just a new item separately, business. This is gonna hurt our employees tremendously and the, and the ones that are living in Douglas County, they may get a big tax increase. So they're getting a triple whammy. So I'd like to see it removed and put a little bit more thought if we can ease into something. But we need a plan going forward. We need to get away from this defined benefit plan. No one has them these days, so we need to get away from them. With that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Certainly, as the chairman of the defined benefits plan and program, I certainly welcome you to come to our meeting tomorrow. In fact, this was your suggestion about increasing the pensions, but we're not, you know, the contribution. However, we're not looking at two thousand and twenty. Mark and I have been in discussions, we're not doing anything for two thousand and twenty. We're looking at for two thousand and twenty-one, the three percent. Mark, I had some conversations with him this past weekend and he assured me that it's two thousand and twenty-one, so the employees will not get a double hit. And also, it was your suggestion to look at those and I just certainly took everyone's suggestions under consideration. And again, it's been since two thousand and ten. And defined benefit program, before we scrap it, I don't plan to do that. We're looking at changing vesting. Vesting is five years in this organization. Places that are sustainable are looking at, they have ten years vesting. So we're gonna be discussing that as well tomorrow for two thousand and twenty-one. Anyone, it'll be after anyone who start January two thousand and twenty-one, of course, vesting would be ten years. So that'll take some of the pressure off this, this benefit, defined benefit plan. But of course, we're not looking at anything for two thousand and twenty. Mark, am I correct? That's what you shared with me yesterday. Is that correct?
No, I was under the impression that we were starting this now, but we can start it January two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, I thought that's what we were talking.
My point was that we won't, this will not help two thousand and twenty numbers. It will help two thousand and twenty-one numbers.
Right.
As far as the defined benefit pension is concerned.
Okay.
Nice.
But that's up to the board. We can start January first.
The furloughs start immediately or what? Is the furloughs are not issued for next year?
Yeah, they start, no, they start immediately. It's just, it's five furlough days for right now. So.
I know I suggested.
You can't have our cake and eat it too. You're saying, don't raise the citizens' taxes, don't do this. I mean, I'm in a rock between a heart, you know, and I'm in, I'm between, in the middle being screwed.
I know, ma'am.
So I'm doing all I can to respond to the concerns of the citizens and also to the, to the employees. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. You have any other comment? I don't wanna interrupt you. You have anything else you wanna add?
I know I did originally say that about the furloughs, but we were throwing out a whole lot of things at the time. And, and a lot of things have changed. And when we look at our revenues and everything, you know, we just had a splash, a presentation. Splash figures aren't down, but our sales tax, we're telling the citizens it's down. But I forgot about the three point eight million that was added to the budget after when we were trying to balance the budget. But anyway, we can point fingers all day long. We're in a mess and we got, we got to clear it up, but we don't want everything going in one direction and just a certain group of people.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. Certainly, the mess is an overstatement. I think we're gonna be fine. Just let us finish it off tomorrow and wait till you hear the, the presentation at the public hearing and then you'll decide whether it's a mess or it's okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, are you there?
Yeah, I, I don't know where that little sidebar was going, but we were not on that track. But I, but I get politics. You know, it, it's, it's, right, it's, it's, you can't be both. You, you have to take a position. Either you cut or raise. There is no in-between in this place because you can't have a balance, right? But you can't be so too far to the right, too far to the left that it will break. So you gotta find a balance, right? So I hear the messaging, right? And we can't get convenience. Right? And we can't get convenience and try to throw um, smoke and mirrors and, and, and chaos in the midst of, no, steady. And nobody confused about what we're looking at, steady. Take your own position, what you see is what it is. Don't let nobody define for you what it is. Right? So I'm looking at this. And I'm looking at this and, and we're, we're, I wish it would have been a little bit more of a package like Congress, like we're onesie twosie, we're doing the grant thing and then we're doing the this thing. It's like, okay, guys, y'all, it's like whoever has the presence is slipping it in, but it's like, ah, okay, okay. I, I'm just gonna deal with this one alone. Uh, and this is sort of like with that healthcare. Like when, 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 you know, my eye medicine went from thirty dollars a month to two hundred dollars a month. I got five, I got four vials. Employees, I get it. Um, this pension thing right here, I was here in two thousand nine and ten. We, we have a very, we collectively have a rich pension plan. Now, listen to the narrative, like, okay, those are two hundred something people that were in, they're, they're very well taken care of. Some double taken care of. Okay, I get it. Right, right, well taken care of. Right? But uh, if we were matching pound for pound with the employees from the five to eight percent, I, I, I think, but that defeats the purpose, but I could, I could accept this. I'm not quite certain this is the lever to use um, to make up the shortfall. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm landing probably in the same place that Madam Guyer, but for a very, very different reason. Um, I agree that this, this take this out of consent. I, I'm not saying that don't move forward with the consideration and up or down, because you gotta move. But that, that, that five to eight, it greets me. It's like, yeah, I get it. But that, that's, that's future. That, 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 that's ongoing. Whereas a furlough day is right now, one time. Right? This is an ongoing increase. Right? You're not giving them an ongoing salary. I heard compression early. Well, you can deal with that, you know, you, you, you can get there if you advocate for it, but I'm not certain that this is the area. I know the ex, the expense associated with the pension. I get, and I don't disagree we should come off of, but we're, we're in the midst of a moment. And I think that this is, has a long-term impact on employees going from five to eight without a match with us. You can't make it up like that. I, I just, mm, it greets me. I'm not voting today. It's just like, uh, I don't know about this one. Uh, I get it. I appreciate staff looking for every, every angle. Everything's on the table. I get it. Just on this one, I don't know about that, but that's just me. And um, I, I agree, take it out of consent. I'll stand with that. At least you have two people who wants to be as an independent item. Uh, but I, I will always respect and honor the full board. I yield, I'm chair.
Thank you so much. Lisa, if you could, I would like to take tab number fourteen off because I wanna, uh, it's, it's no rush, because I'm looking at twenty twenty one, and we can certainly talk about that a little later, because it's not gonna be put in those twenty twenty numbers as we close out the, the, the year. So if we could just take that off the table and take it off the agenda, I don't even wanna see it on the agenda tomorrow. Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, just take it off. I wanna, I wanna go back and, and, and certainly uh, place some considerations. Again, I've just carried the voices of what I heard on, at our mid-year budget retreat, but certainly I'm, I'm one that who would negotiate and move and, and make adjustments, because I understand everybody's uh, it has bills to pay hardships and things like that, but certainly, we're not gonna back off of a two, two thousand ten and to two thousand twenty, ten-year run is a long time to be at five percent. So we will, we will negotiate and determine what we, we will land on a sweet spot. Uh, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, and then we can bring this back to the Board of Commissioners. All right, we're gonna move on to tab number.
Let me check, Madam Chair, hold on, hold on. Apologies. I, I, I wanna at least speak to this particular issue here, just to make sure, so I, I, I think there's a bit of confusion. Um, Mark, this may be for you and I don't know if Lisa, whomever, Jennifer, whomever is on the, on the uh, on here, and, and maybe even Vice Chair Robinson might could also uh, answer this though. I thought the five to the eight percent move was to help. And not that I'm for it, but that was part of the numbers. And this numbers game that will offset the two point eight nine, eight point eight five, military and other things. And that, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think I heard you say, but didn't say, that was a part of the whole package deal. Not that I'm for this, but that was part of the whole package deal to offset the numbers that everybody was trying to get to. That we short, well, we shortfall, correct?
That may or may not have been said, but this increase from five to eight will not affect the twenty twenty defined benefit pension pay that we have to make. We've already sent that money to Jeb Corp, and they've already done the analysis with the actuarials. So what this would do, it would help out next year's number, because we would be increasing the payments to Jeb Corp.
Okay, but I think.
So it won't affect twenty twenty.
But the perception was, and the conversation was about twenty twenty, the completion of the year. Even though you're looking at twenty twenty one, because I know, I, I'm a part of the defined benefits, and I think getting rid of that would be ludicrous. Uh, but that's whomever's opinion. Um, but with that, understood it now. So the clarity is, we were only speaking for twenty twenty one moving forward, not.
Yes, it would only help out twenty twenty one's number, because twenty twenty's already been calculated.
I got you, and I'm, I, I, I understand it. I, I just wanna make sure for clarity, but I think the misconception was, this was a part of it, it is entirety to complete the year and twenty twenty one, but that's okay. I, 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 I've never been, you know, all in on that anyway, but that's kind of how I received that information versus uh, what you're telling me now, though. So uh, with that being clear, though, twenty twenty one is pulled off the consent agenda, and you're right, there is still time. But I guess going back to Vice Chair Robinson, will the numbers work without it? If it does, we're, we're going in the right direction, but if it doesn't, now we're back to something different than what we've already advertised with the possibility of this possible military increase. And furlough days. And so, Mark, if you'll do me a favor, and, and Vice Chair Robinson, I think you can probably handle this with me as well. Let's go back and look at the numbers to make sure that all the numbers add up to what we needed to add up to. Once we are done with this, we're done with this. Not that it doesn't, the number doesn't match the, the, where we're going with trying to um, get through the end of the year. And be prepared for twenty twenty one. So I, I guess I'll lean to my colleague, uh, Vice Chair Robinson, I don't know if you can kind of comment to that, Vice Chair Robinson, I'm assuming you'll take it up in the Finance Committee? And, and make sure kind of what that looks like and what that truly, the number, that it does make sense that we can pull this off without that? Or that's inclusive? So I guess I wanna pose that first question to uh, Vice Chair Robinson. I don't know if he wants to comment on that, but if not, then I'm gonna.
I nodded my head. Fin this committee.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, fine.
Okay, all right. So on that note, Fred, okay, thank you very much, but, but I hope that we will not even think about relieving ourselves of the defined benefit side of this and, and take that away from this, from the uh, employees of Douglas County. I hope that's, that's not an option. At least not for me. It would never, ever be an option. There's too many benefactors there to um, to just take that off the table. I mean, not the three percent I'm talking about, but I'm talking about the overall package of what we deal with, with ACCG, so. Okay, thank you very much, and I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. All right, we're gonna move on. I have uh, one that we slipped in on us, which is uh, and Mark, before I uh, move to tab number sixteen. I'm sorry, before I move to tab number fifteen and sixteen, I wanna see if I could slip Milton, Milton Kidd in. Milton, are you available? Milton Kidd. Uh, Milton has, uh, Board of Commissioners, he gonna bring a discussion to you about regarding absentee mail-out ballots here in Douglas County. Milton, would you please present to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am. Let me remove my mask, because I'm in the office right now.
Okay.
Okay. Essentially, uh, well, this came, this initiative came from a lot of uh, different citizens and including representatives that represent Douglas County. Those representatives uh, consist of Representative Roger Bruce, Representative Kimberly Alexander, Representative William Bodie, Representative Shan Beasley Tees, and Representative Donzella James. These representatives, along with a myriad of other uh, citizens, uh, through their phone calls and through their emails to the Board of Elections and Registrations, have asked for essentially what uh, the state uh, did for the citizens of Douglas County during the June ninth uh, general primary election. They would like uh, all citizens of Douglas County to receive a pre-field voter registration, uh, not voter registration, a pre-field absentee ballot application for the November third election. This uh, application would go out to all of the citizens where they're able to send that back in through a myriad of ways to request a ballot for the November general third uh, general election. Now, one of the reasons that they were asking about this is uh, some of the, the issues that uh, Cobb Douglas Health uh, brought up today with the fact that Douglas County still has elevated numbers as far as uh, its overall COVID nineteen uh, epidemic going forward. It was interested in their meeting uh, today with giving facts and figures from COVID nineteen that uh, one of, well, I guess, the current spike actually happened around the July uh, timeframe, which I conclude may have been one of the uh, contributing factors from one of the things that even the governor's office has requested that municipal governments and governments in general and the general public uh, do that is limiting the number of people that are gathered in large social settings. We do know that the November third general election will be what uh, elections officials are termed as the largest election in U.S. history at this point. So essentially, we're trying to mitigate an efforts to take out what would be probably upwards of thirty thousand people from polling locations by allowing them an opportunity that they currently have. An opportunity to submit an absentee ballot by mail and not have those individuals waiting in line, not have those individuals interacting with the general public in confined uh, locations and polling locations, and essentially becoming vectors throughout Douglas County that could potentially spread COVID nineteen. We are asking in a petition from the county today to allot a hundred thousand dollars in CARES Act funding to the department to be able to utilize uh, with this absentee ballot mail initiative to the citizens of Douglas County. I'm an individual that believes in facts and figures and giving people the numbers. So let me give you the nu, the numbers. For twenty sixteen presidential election year, Douglas County uh, processed twenty four hundred and nine absentee ballot uh, abs, absentee ballots and applications. For twenty twelve, we processed twenty three hundred fifty eight. And that is in comparison to the June ninth general primary, where we processed twenty one, well, over twenty one thousand absentee ballot applications. We were able to uh, with that, take out that number of individuals from being in enclosed spaces and potentially becoming uh, vectors to spread COVID nineteen. Uh, the state has uh, made these funds available to municipal and local governments to address possible uh, impacts of COVID nineteen. And I feel that this particular uh, issue does fall within those guidelines, and it is something that the county can look at as a proactive step in order to reduce those number of people being uh, at polling locations. Now, that helps. From my perspective, this is good for poll workers, because these are in most cases, well, in every case, these are citizens of Douglas County that are participating in their civic duty by working uh, a polling location. But I, as their director, have to do everything within my power to help mitigate their exposure to COVID nineteen and help protect them and their families and the overall community. And I think for me, this is a, this is one of the steps that the county uh, can take to help mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen and protect its citizenry. This is, I, I understand that this is a big ask for the county, but those funds have been made available for such resources. So at this time, I'm asking uh, Douglas County to allot this department those funds in order to be able to address the concerns of the citizens of Douglas County.
Okay, um, thank you. Are you finished, Director?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, before I yield to the Board of Commissioners, certainly just had a question for you. You know, with this uh, last absentee ballot process, the citizens all over the state of Georgia had an opportunity to go to an app or, I guess, online to look to see if their vote, uh, if their uh, absentee ballot had been received. Uh, will we have that mechanism in place here in Douglas County, so they could just make sure that their ballots were received? Do you have, are we that sophisticated, or can you share with me?
Yes, ma'am. The actual app is the My Voter Page Georgia app. When citizens go on this application and enter their first initial, their last name, the county in which you live and your date of birth, there is a feature on there that once you have submitted an absentee ballot application to this office, and we have acknowledged receipt of that application by entering to what is called the Election Net Assistant, which is what all of the counties in Georgia use to process voter registration applications and absentee ballot applications. It sends a record to your Georgia My Voter Page that shows that we have uh, essentially uh, accepted that application in. And when it comes time to actually checking the ballots themselves, it'll also show that your ballot has been accepted back into our office. So yes, ma'am, we do have that capacity.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to know, you know, from, from a technology standpoint, I know we're uh, under your leadership, we're pretty sophisticated, but I wanted you to be able to share that information with the citizens. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for our Director of um, Board of Elections? Kidd. Vice Chairman Robinson?
All right, so I, I get it. Um, uh, we have received um, federal funding, uh, regardless of whether it was direct or via, via the state, there is money uh, that can be used to cover uh, increased expenses associated with our COVID situation, uh, current situation. And so what I'm hearing is that um, we've got a million six upfront, up to five million dollars net difference um, to use uh, accordingly. Um, and so I'm hearing that out of that money, I wanna be clear, of source of funding that we're looking to take in addition to the other um, ask for economic development, a hundred grand. I'm now hearing a, a hundred grand for um, um, for this election, which I'm, I'm fine with. I, I just want, it's all about the source of funding, so that we can uh, because you got two, two different money things we're dealing with, right? Our operational costs and then our increased costs associated with COVID. Um, and so I just wanna be sure that I'm, I'm clear. So the money, the county administrator, so to cover this cost, um, have we received the one point six million dollars initially associated with COVID? And if we got cash in hand, not just what we gonna get the check, cash in hand from that one point six, then that hundred will come from that. Or is this a deferred, we've gotta spend the money upfront with reimbursement later? Can you just help me? Milton, it's not for you to, you're okay. Mark, can you help me understand the cash flow, please?
Yes, so we have received the one point six. We still, we have submitted uh, documentation for the one point six, and we're waiting to hear back uh, approval on that. Once we receive that, then we will submit for the remaining up to five point five.
Right, so did we, we, we did receive a check for one point six?
Yes, sir.
Have we spent all that money? Have we, uh, I, I know we had intentions, but is that one point six gone?
Uh, pretty close.
Do you have a hundred thousand difference in pretty close? It's okay, whatever the answer is, I just wanna know.
Um, Sabrina, can you answer that? Where we uh?
Yeah, I have the code.
So if you include, go ahead, Sabrina.
Um, right now, we've spent right at one point five, but if we include the two hundred thousand, then yeah, it's all. Um, right now, we've spent right at one point five, but if we include the two hundred thousand, then yeah, it's all more than gone.
All right, so to the Board of Commissioners, we've got priorities here. Ballots or grants, right, for the current round? Else that means that that's money in hand, which means that we would have to go into our general fund to, with the expectation that we get reimbursed later. You know, however long it takes, thirty days, thirty minutes, I don't know what the process is, but you guys get the point. Pay attention to the flow. There's a lot of stuff that's being thrown at us and I get it. But I mean, we're, we're here, we're paid two dollars and fifty cent to show up every two weeks to get a hundred million dollar spend. Right, so I, I, this is for the citizens, like, now, think about what we're being asked to do. And I know these meetings are, they get loans sometimes, but think about what we gotta be able to process right here in the moment. Right here in the moment. We don't live here day to day. So for my peers' sake, uh, you, you have a, I, I'm not opposed to anything. I just want to make sure that you're clear that, um, we can do a hundred thousand dollars, sounds like we can do this ballot as a priority now with no drag on the general fund. Uh, the two hundred thousand is being asked, or whatever the number was from earlier. All right, it may not have made the cut, I don't know. Um, but, but again, pay attention, um, just pay attention. Um, and, uh, I'm just gonna leave it at that, ma'am chair, I'm fine with the agenda as is. Uh, if you're adding this for tomorrow, uh, to get ahead. Thank you. I yield.
Any other questions? I see Commissioner Guyder. Oh, well, you know what, Commissioner Guyder, before you chime in, I'll let you go first and then, uh, we have the Attorney Bernard behind you. Commissioner Guyder, please.
Well, I, I'd like to hear what he has to say. And I'll give it to him and then I can go.
Okay, okay, Attorney Bernard.
Uh, y- yes, uh, Madam Chair and Board Members, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, talk, speak up just a little louder, Attorney.
Uh, Milton had this cleared through legal. There's no, nothing in state law that prohibits, uh, this, uh, particular practice, at least right now. I should make you aware that the state has gone through recently and announced they'll have an online web portal to be able to request absentee ballots online. Of course, that wouldn't necessarily help somebody that doesn't have access to those facilities to be able to request it. But I do want to ask Milton one thing to be cautious about. He, Milton used the word pre-filled. I'd be very cautious about pre-filling anything on a absentee ballot application. I think that might be considered, uh, assisting the voter, which would have to be signed off on. So just, let's take a look at that particular language before that happens, if the board moves in this direction.
Two things. The pre-filled portion of the voter registration application is not a pre-filled application as far as what you would think is pre-filled. The pre-filled portion means to say that this voter, which, uh, which is attached to this voter registration, uh, application is submitting this application. The application process itself requires that the voter have what's called a wet signature on the application. So the applicant has to still sign and acknowledge that they are requesting a absentee ballot application. What the pre-filled portion does, it allows us to add a barcode for faster processing of absentee ballot applications. So it essentially marks that this application belongs to this voter, but this voter still has to sign and date that application.
So Milton, that's the only portion that's pre-filled in that vote, that code that ties it in, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Madam Chair. And, and Milton had cleared this previously, so he's correcting his request and it'll, it's up to y'all, what y'all do.
Okay, thank you so much, Milton, for bringing this forth. Commissioner Guyder, do you have anything? I was, you know, you said you wanted to wait on Ken. Okay.
Thank you. Um, Milton, um, last time, did y'all mail those, uh, applications for absentee ballots out or did it come directly from the state?
It came directly from the state.
Okay, how many of those were returned, do you know? By the post office?
Uh, I don't have, returned as in, uh, how many turned back in?
Not, not deliverable.
Uh, I don't, I don't have the undeliverable, uh, numbers with it, but, uh, like I said, we did process twenty one thousand. Uh, I, I can say the, the state did send out, uh, roughly ninety six thousand, uh, applications to the voters of Douglas County at that time. But I will say this too, though. Even being able to take twenty, thirty, forty, I'm seeing some estimates of upwards of fifty thousand people out of polling locations on, uh, election day and advance voting. I think that these are legitimate and tangible steps that we can take as a county to help mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen and not have individuals that are, in most cases, of the most compromised, uh, health groups inside of polling locations.
Okay, um, when I was tax commissioner and we mailed out all these tax bills and everything, we would get like three or four trays of return mail where people had moved or they had, um, died or whatever, you know? Um, we had to research to find out whether or not the property had sold, whatever. But, um, I have a problem and of course, this is party lines. Everybody knows this, I'm gonna say it. Th- this is party lines. Everybody that you read, all the representatives and the senators, they're all Democrats and we all know that. Um, but there's a lot of people out in, in the public that are very concerned about the integrity of the vote because you don't have to show any kind of ID in order to do, to vote. Uh, someone is on camera, um, I don't know if you've seen it, but, uh, dumping a whole bag full of ballots in the mailbox up at the courthouse. Now, did you have any more, uh, drop boxes? You know, IRS, you have to have it postmarked by a certain day and, uh, the post office gets out there and they collect it. You drive through, you hand it to them and, and, and that's everybody out here, everybody. So are you looking outside the box how you can handle the numbers without mailing out a bunch of, uh, applications, um, that could? We know it could be defrauded.
Can I address those questions? Okay, a couple of things. You do have to show identification to vote absentee by mail. My office, every application for absentee ballot, no matter if it's on one of the applications we submit or if it's a voter printing out that application and sending it in themselves. Every application that comes into this office, the signature of that application is checked against your voter registration file. We also have access to driver's services. So we pull your driver's license, including the signature which you provided to driver's services and match that to the application itself as well. There are a myriad of safety protocols in place when dealing with absentee ballot requests. I will also say that along the lines of this being a partisan issue, uh, these are facts and figures. Prior to twenty twenty's election year, the largest number of individuals for Douglas County and throughout the state of Georgia that requested absentee ballots were members of the Republican Party. This, uh, this idea of the safety of absentee ballots and this is relatively new, uh, inclination of an idea that has just, uh, come about during this twenty twenty election cycle. Now, to address the second issue that you, uh, stated with an individual dropping off absentee ballots at a Dropbox location, the state of Georgia, and we follow all of the rules of the state of Georgia. The state of Georgia has a specific, uh, grouping of individuals who you can return their ballot for, whether they be elderly and disabled parents, a sibling or daughter, uh, it even outlines nieces and nephews. If you actually get an absentee ballot request form, on that form, it outlines who can return the ballot of such individual. So any individual that was dropping into, uh, ballots into a Dropbox location, you can see what the relationship to those individuals for those ballots that those individuals are returning. There are safety protocols in place with dealing with absentee. I will say that every state in the Union has some form of, of mail-in voting. This is one of the things that we can do, that we know that the CDC has said, uh, that will help reduce the overall spread of COVID nineteen. We're approaching, uh, the, at this point, the fall and winter season with what will be a heavier than normal flu season on top of COVID, uh, COVID nineteen that can potentially put a strain on communities that our own, uh, Cup, Cobb, uh, Douglas, uh, Health has said that we are already above the numbers where we should be as a community. So any steps that we can take to reduce or mitigate our overall impact, I think are within reason.
So you, you're saying that you've got everybody's signature on file?
We have access, uh, to, whenever you turn in an application.
You have access, but how many of the absentee ballots do you actually check?
We check every absentee ballot application. We check every absentee ballot itself for a signature. We can, we cannot legally reject a ballot until it has been verified by at least three members of my staff to check those signatures. Even when, uh, there's a discrepancy with the signature, then the state has implemented what is called a cure affidavit protocol or how to reach out to voters and the different ways in which we're legally required to reach out to voters that there are any citizens, that there are any issues with their signature. And anyone, uh, that wants, I know our time is limited in, in this session, but anyone that wants to reach out, uh, to the office to exactly go over how we check signatures and how we verify that, I would be more than happy to sit down with yourself or any other members of the board that are concerned with the integrity of the vote. My, uh, goal as the Elections Director is to make sure that Douglas County always has free and fair elections following all, uh, protocols. I will say too, though, the state does verify every, uh, absentee ballot request that, uh, we send out. They verify the form that we reject. They go over and cross-examine our either rejection or acceptance of signatures as well. These are steps that are already being taken and will continue to be taken for the citizens of Douglas County.
Well, um, when I went to vote and, uh, when I went in to vote, uh, in the primary, there was, I was, there was no line. I walked right up to the table and it took, I know, twenty minutes for them to do whatever they were doing in the computer. So what, what are they doing in the computer that would take that long to wait on one customer?
Okay, when you came in voting in the primary, I, I am hesitant to look at a voter's file and discuss this type of information on, uh, camera. But had you requested an absentee ballot prior to? Okay, when you go in, when you go into a, well, you saw, you said computers, so that means you advance voted. When you go into advance vote, we have access, uh, to the entire voter file because anyone out of Douglas County can come to any one of our advanced voting locations and early vote. One of the steps with coming in, we check what's called your election net file to make sure that we have not issued you an absentee ballot of any sort. If an absentee ballot has been issued, then we have to cancel out that live ballot in order to let you vote.
But the person said that he was having to fill me out an absentee ballot, so that, that kind of confused me.
Okay, uh, a- advanced in person is absentee. Advanced in person is absentee in person because you're outside of the polling location on election day. But as far as paperwork is concerned, it is still an absentee in-person ballot. So you have absentee in person and then you have absentee by mail. So there are two different sides of the same coin. They're both counted, in fact, in figures as absentee.
Okay, um, just to put my two cents out there, I'm against mailing just absentee ballots. And this is what is on the agenda, to send out absentee ballots.
This is, we're, we're not asking to send out absentee ballots. You cannot legally send out an absentee ballot without a request. What we're asking is to be able to disseminate the request to the citizens of Douglas County.
Well, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda, that's what's confusing. But, uh, anyway, uh, just my, my opinion, I don't think we ought to do this. And I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner, um, Guyder. Thank you so much. Uh, Lisa, if you could tomorrow, put this on as a new business item. I, I, I hear some, uh, different opinions from our boards. So I wanted everybody to be able to weigh in accordingly tomorrow regarding this request. All right, thank you so, thank you so much, um, Director Kidd. All right, we're gonna move to tab number, we're almost there, y'all. We're gonna move to tab number fifteen, Authorization to Approve a License Agreement with the Douglas County School System for Use of the Douglas County Radio System and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents Subject to Final Legal Review. County Administrator, Mark Teal.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So we've been in discussion, as you're aware, with Mr. North of the Douglas County School System. And he's in agreement with the numbers that are included in this, in this agreement. So it essentially allows the school system, uh, their new, more specifically, their new police force, I guess, uh, for lack of a better term, um, to use. So they would have to purchase the radios, they would maintain the radios, they would pay us seven hundred and fif- seven hundred and thirty-five dollars per radio per year to help go towards our maintenance of the entire system. And they would pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, one-time upfront fee. So that's essentially what's included in the agreement. I think we have, it's a, Mr. North requested a ten-year agreement. And I think there's a, there's an opt-out clause in there as well. It's for both parties.
Okay, thank you so much, County Administrator. Board of Commissioners, you have any comments? Okay, sound, oh, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just add, uh, great job, Mark. Oh, was it for me? Okay, I thought you, I thought, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. You did say I can go ahead and take the floor, correct?
You can, and then Commissioner Guyder's next, okay.
Oh, got you, okay. So, so Mark, uh, great job. I'm glad we was able to kind of pull this off. But I guess my other question, though, is, um, I'm having a senior moment. Uh, you said something about, uh, Jesus. I, I, I was gonna ask you a question about the whole makeup, which is fine, what we got. And what, but my question, I think, was in the, oh, legal. So has, has, uh, um, Ken and those guys had a chance to look at this?
Yes, sir.
And I, I guess they, they want to wait and comment tomorrow or do Ken?
We've made some minor changes. Legal made some minor changes and we've already incorporated those into the agreement.
Got it, got it.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so those minor changes, are they, do we need to make those public now or should we wait until tomorrow? Or does that really matter? Or, or there wasn't, it was insignificant?
It's included in the agreement that's attached in the packet.
Yeah, that's what y'all have.
Say again, Ken, I'm sorry, Mark. Say again, Ken.
Y'all, the, the, there's, the, the agreement attached to the pack is the one that had our changes already in it.
Got it. Okay, okay, got you. Okay, um, okay. Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't think I have any other questions, but I, I just know we, you know, great job in trying to get us to this point. And especially thanks to, um, Commissioner Carson, who kind of led this charge on all of this. And, and, you know, kind of, Mark, we all had these, you know, conversations and, you know, trying to get to this point. So I'm, I'm, you know, kudos to her. So outside of that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other questions for Mark? Uh, Commissioner Guyder, I saw your hand.
Yes, uh, Mark, could you repeat those figures? Two hundred and fifty thousand upfront? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am. Two hundred and fifty thousand, one, it's a one-time upfront payment. They would be due within ten days of execution of the agreement, um, or the execution date. They would pay seven hundred and thirty-five dollars per radio per year to help out with our maintaining the system. But they would have to purchase their own radios and they would have to maintain their own radios.
So do you know how much the annual payout would be from the school board? I know we lost a half a million dollars when they.
It depends on how many, uh, it depends on how many radios, but the number I heard was around thirty-five. So that would be, hold on one second. Twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, but that'd be based on thirty-five radios. They could have forty, they could have thirty.
Okay, and how many radios do we have? Will we have about? Do you have any idea? Okay, and how many radios do we have? Will we have about? Do you have any idea?
I do not know. Uh, Jason or Scott, or either one of you on here?
That's okay. I, I don't want to hold.
I don't know. Not sure how many. We have a lot, but I don't know how many. I don't know the exact number.
Yeah. Okay, well, uh, I'll yield back. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, uh-huh.
Uh, just, just to point out, there were two minor changes that had to do with typos this morning that may not be in your packet. I just wanted to tell, uh, follow back on Commissioner Mitchell's question that the substantive changes are in the package that y'all have. There were two minor typos, we called this morning, and Lisa has the corrected version of it. But nothing, uh, no substantive changes other than what you have before you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Uh-huh. I heard Commissioner Robinson first and then you, Commissioner Carthian. Okay, Commissioner Robinson, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am, sir. I'll be quick. Um, so I, just for the record, I, I think I heard you guys say it was gonna be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars one-time upfront fee. Uh, I came in at, when we first discussed this, about three fifty. Um, um, I, I see that it, it, it was negotiated down. Um, I duly noted that's what my peers, um, support. I, I yield to that. And the reason I, I had a three fifty footprint, um, or initial figure, again, I don't negotiate against myself, is the fact that, well, we put fifteen million into this system upfront. Right, fifteen, which, get it. Right, and so I'm looking at one-time fifteen million in for us. Day two fifty versus three fifty, all things being equal. For them to, to have the same type of coverage, they'd had to put in fifteen million. But okay, we work with our partners in the community. And we tend to try to accommodate, well, we'll, we'll do the heavy lifting. Right, just like with Rose. We'll, we'll pick up Riverside and, you know, from the city and, and, and Chicago Avenue and the things that we do. We, we're the county. We carry the burden. Seven percent of that tax dollar off the property roughly goes to the school board. But yet we have the majority of the population. They've got twenty-five thousand kids. We've got a hundred thousand adults. Easy math. You have to give balance to sort of like, okay, I get it. Pay attention to the numbers. Right, we, we, the county carries the load. I, I get it. We're the linebackers. We, we do it all. We, we'll cover everything else. I get it. But I, I want to make sure we get credit for what we carry. Right, we, we, we have to do everything else with less. How convenient. I get the school, we should take care of the hearth of the county, of the community. It's all about school, no problem. Well, let's make sure that, that we get the proper credit for being as efficient as we can, but only thirty percent of property tax. And having to protect when them kids walk off their campus, that we gotta take care of the whole system. Right, so I, I want to make sure as we get into these numbers, it's, oh, I got you, school board. All right, two fifty in, you would have to build your own system at fifteen million, but okay, we got you. But for the greater, for the greater constituents out there, like, let's make sure we're getting our proper credit as a board of commissioners that, like, look, we're, we, we care. We, we try to leverage. We, we try to help. We try to be sensitive. But there is, um, and, and we, we try to be practical in how we approach, um, costs. Um, again, I would have still liked three fifty on this, but if, if that was the number that looks like you guys worked through a two fifty, I'm, I'm gonna let that go for now because it's all relative to me, um, at that, that dollar point. So again, um, move forward and, uh, I yield, ma'am, sir. I'm good. Thank you. Did we lose me?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, loaned you there.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Carthian, you have the floor. And then we're gonna move on.
Uh, got you. I, I will be really succinct. We, we did, um, look at what the school board proposed. Uh, one of the things that I just want everybody who's listening to this to understand is that the BLC, the BOE, the city, all of the taxes that are going up, no one wants taxes to go up. But as you see, there are services that are needed in order to keep this county going. And my thought in working with the school board was to ensure that they had the services that they need at a cost that they could afford as well. If we all work together to keep costs down, all of us as taxpayers won't really feel the burden or it won't be as big of a burden as, uh, as anticipated. I hope we all come to the table and do our part in helping us all to keep the burden down, including with the Board of Education. That was it, Madam Chair. I just wanted people to know, we are trying to work with all of our governments and our elected officials in order to keep the cost for this county low or reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthian. All right, if there's no other contribution for this discussion, we're gonna move on to the last but not least. And it is tab number sixteen, is Approval to Amend the Twenty Twenty Budget to Reflect the Following. We have Sabrina Cockburn. Uh, Mark, is she planning to present today or you just wanted this to be on the agenda? What, what was the plan?
No, she didn't go over the numbers, if you would like, or we can wait till tomorrow.
That's fine. We, okay, uh, Sabrina Cockburn, you have the floor, through our Assistant Director of Finance.
I'm gonna pull it up. Can everyone see that?
No.
Let me try creating my camera. Are y'all gonna see it now? Okay.
Yes.
Um, and I do want to kind of jump back to talk about what Commissioner Mitchell was asking because it all relates with the millage rate and part of this includes some of the DB. That five, that five to three, eight percent does not affect how we are with our millage rate. That was never calculated in. I think the confusion was, we did the DB presentation the same time as the mid-year retreat and the, we gave you all a half a million figure if it was changed right now from the estimated covered payroll. But again, that's just to go towards the liability if it started right now. So that would not affect millage rate. It doesn't affect our projections because as Mark said, we've got the invoice already. They're not gonna do another actuarial evaluation on us. So, um, this number, I just sent out another one this morning. We had to alter it somewhat. Um, but you can see the total, uh, general fund expense cut right here is the two point nine million. We actually had departments submit over four million dollars in cuts. The reason you're showing it a little lower is since we're gonna go ahead and give everybody a more accurate picture of where we stand, we went ahead and added in the required portion of the DB. Now, if the board chooses to go back in and add in and want to pay the recommended, which is about one point three million higher, we can do that and amend the budget at that time. But since we know we have to pay the required, we went ahead and added it in. So the departments really did come up. That four million dollars was including the remaining BIRs, um, any kind of frozen positions, pretty much reduction in all training and then just cuts within all their other lines. So we end up getting about two point nine million net, but it was four million and then when you took out the DB, that's where we get the two point nine. But then we also, we're gonna show one picture. We have to do the revenues. So it was about eleven point six million. And I will, it's a lot, we adjusted every line. Some went up, some went down, but just to give you a summary of that, um, that's reducing lost five million and that's to keep it flat for July through December, which would just be the same as we received last year. And as you'll see in this afternoon's finance committee, we feel confident that that'll be no issue and that's kind of where it's trending. Uh, we're gonna reduce TAVT, two point seven million. That's estimating three hundred and fifty per month for July through December. And again, in tonight's, or this afternoon's finance committee, I'm gonna go over a new house bill that took effect where we've been seeing a lot of increases in TAVT. But the state was noticing that counties and school boards were receiving a large increase due to the percentage change, but cities were not getting a lot. So they have actually reversed the fees of what the cities and the counties get to try and correct that. So we know with that and then obviously with the economy that affects TAVT. Um, intergovernmental, since we're not having the SROs, we had to reduce the budget for that payment. It's about five hundred thousand. Uh, charges for services, as you know, parks, wrecks, libraries, Connect Douglas, all of those have been closed down or limited. So we're reducing that about five hundred thousand. Courts and law enforcement, same, limited operations, one point five million. And then since we're removing the BIRs, we have to remove the revenue side. Uh, the sheriff was gonna give five hundred thousand for equipment, so we had to take that out. Um, so that's kind of just the large ticket summaries. I don't think, I mean, if you guys want, I can send y'all the detailed line. I mean, it's large spreadsheets, but that's gonna get you to that eleven point six. So the net impact to the general fund is gonna be a negative eight point six or almost eight point seven million. And then the other funds, unincorporated, and it had about thirty, almost thirty-four thousand in cuts. Fire and EMS, a hundred and seventeen in cuts, and then animal control had about seventy-seven thousand in cuts. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, thank you so much, Sabrina. If you could just tell them what the initial, uh, approved budget was for twenty twenty and what the, your amended amount. I believe they want to hear bottom line.
Yeah. So the amended amount will be, we're gonna be reducing it eight point, almost eight point seven million. And then the, hold on, let me pull up what the total is.
Yep. What was the total?
So the amended amount was, right now, we're at one oh one, one oh one point six million. And we're amending it down about eight point two.
So what is that number? So the.
So that's one oh one point six minus. So that's gonna take us around ninety-three million.
Okay, okay. That's what they want to hear. They want to hear the, the, you know, high level.
That's just for the general fund. The other funds are obviously will be separate, but that's the biggest, you know, where we're.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the board or comments?
Or I apologize, that's the net impact. We're talking about just the revenues. Are you wanting to separate it? The revenues will be one oh one point six minus. So the revenues are going down to about ninety-one, but the expenses are going from a hundred and four million to, they're going down to one oh one point one. So the revenues are where you're gonna see the biggest reduction. That's the ninety-one million. But the expenses are gonna be brought to one oh one point one million.
All right, Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm. Okay. And Commissioner, uh, Geider, you're next. Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, just my peers, I haven't seen this. This is my first time hearing it. I'm sure I'm gonna take this up in our finance committee here, which I think we're running over for. We'll get there soon. But what I heard was a net difference. Um, just for the sake of the moment, that expenses dropped from one oh four to one oh one, which is three, and our revenues dropped from one oh one to ninety-three. That's eight plus three is eleven. Did I do that right? It's a net difference.
Yeah, no, the net difference is gonna be about eight point seven, but the revenues are gonna go down eleven point six and expenses are going down two point nine.
Good day. All right, we're close enough. I got it.
Yeah.
No, we're good. So, so there's still, um, a gap that, to my peers, we have to answer in the next three meetings, over two weeks, eight days. Um, so just be thoughtful. I appreciate, um, what I'm hearing the administration do is, is addressing, um, succinctly how are we gonna get there, right? There's only so much that we can do from an administrative with only three months, three and a half months left. Time is running out. Right, so you got time and money are the issues here, right? And so I'm hopeful that, and it sounds like, I, I, I see it, the administration is working toward, they are working on things. I, I hear them. But they've got to go into effect ASAP to even be materialized. It's one thing to say it on paper. It's another that practically, there's some of the things that are being offered. Like, can you pull them off in the time that's remaining to realize the yield? And that's my, my, I, I hope that, and then it's something that, that, that aggregated voice, that all these constitutional officers, all these departments who, who said, yes, 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 are y'all gonna be able to pull it off? I hear you. But can you pull it off in a way that we're gonna realize the yield by agreeing to this, this, this modification? So I think I've made my point. Um, again, I'm sure once we get into finance, we'll get into a little bit deeper, a little bit stronger opinion or position for my peers, but today, right now, at this moment, I don't because it's the first time I saw this. So, Madam Chair, I'm gonna yield the floor. Back to you. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Geider, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, this is the first time I've seen this too. Uh, when will we be getting a financial report as of the end of July?
That's in this afternoon's finance committee meeting. I sent it out Sunday.
You sent it out where?
Sunday. Yesterday.
Okay.
It'll be presented as soon as this is done.
I was out of town, was not able to, to look at anything this weekend. Um, but, um, it seems like someone had told me that the sheriff was only, had, had given, uh, a hundred thousand back and now it's up to a million. So is this including anything that's been done since we had our last meeting? Does, has it changed at all?
That's correct. Mark has reached out to all departments and then Madam Chair reached out to the Sheriff's Department and, um, they were able to cut that. So the, where you're getting the sheriff, why it's over a million, it's nine hundred and ninety-three thousand for that lease purchase from the Tahoe's that was a BIR. And then he also gave us a cut on his part-time salaries and then also on his detention, about seventy thousand on overtime. So this was all after we met, Mark just, you know, reached out to all his department heads and asked how you can cut. The chair went to elected officials and this is just reflective of those numbers. So we can amend the budget if you guys choose so, so the finance committee reports do look more accurate and you see where, and like, uh, Commissioner Robinson spoke about, they just say all of our training so far has said to amend it down, take it from them now. So they're not tempted to spend it, just to be safe and sorry. And if something comes up, y'all have the option to give it back down the road. But this way, it forces them to stay strict and tight and try and cut costs as much as possible with the pandemic.
So they were not given a certain amount that they had to cut? Uh, and did every department cooperate?
Um, most all departments and I, I sent out something this morning, but I can send it to your personal too, or I can pull it back up. Let me see if I can pull it back up where you guys can see it.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner, while she's pulling it up, I just want to let you know that the, the elected officials and the constitutional officers really worked hard. When we were at our mid-year budget retreat, certainly I told you that I, we had not solidified all the information. So I saw the propaganda that hit the streets real quickly, but we were working and we are continuing to work. And those numbers, I, I, as I say, the fever is coming down tremendously. So, um, we've been trying to send things to your email. I saw the report that you sent last night, Sabrina, to Commissioner Geider and to all of us, which is that finance report. So, uh, Sabrina, you have the floor.
Can you all see it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So here you can see, I'm sorry, pretty much every department, um, they responded to Mark and if Mark thought there was more after he looked at it, he, you know, emailed back. Unfortunately, there are some departments that are just smaller and they don't have the budget. But I mean, ninety percent of your departments, you can tell, all sent in a good amount. I'm not sure if you guys can kind of see it all. And the reason why general appropriations, again, is a negative because I had to add it, the, um, DB. So it kind of took away from part of that cut. But you can see everybody, you know, was very cooperative and tried a lot. And if you take out the DB, this two point nine million goes to four million. So everybody came together and found four million to cut from their budget.
Okay, I'll wait for the financial, um, because, uh, I'd, I'd like to see about the revenues. I know splosh is not down. Uh, they're, we're, we're up a little bit from last year. But we were told that, um, sales tax is down, uh, forty percent. But I think that's over and above what two thousand and nineteen, uh, reflected anyway. So, um, anyway, let me look, I'll, I'll look at the financial, uh, because we're getting it in bits and pieces. It's very difficult to put it all together. I wish we were at a round table where we could take a pencil and mark this off and mark this off, but we're, we're not. It's very difficult doing it this way. So I yield back.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Geider. I believe the board of commissioners framed what they were looking for and we have certainly done that. You will hear the presentation tomorrow. I think you'll be quite, uh, satisfied with what we have done. Uh, again, we could all sit at the table with a pencil or you all give me and the, the, the administration the ability to get it down and bring you the information back. So I think you'll be quite pleased tomorrow. Okay, with that being said, if there, uh, Mark Teal has one other thing and then we're gonna have to wrap this up. And then, uh, Board of Commissioners, I really appreciate your time and talent today.
Yes, ma'am. So really quick and sorry, I received this email about the first thirty minutes of, uh, our board meeting. So we have a, I received. So we have a, I received a maintenance agreement for the I-20 landscaping, that is the last, uh, document that needs to be signed before we can get permits. Um, so if it pleases the board, we can put that on the agenda tomorrow for new business. I've already sent it to the clerk, and it's a, it's a standard agreement from Georgia DOT, it's a maintenance agreement for the I-20 landscape.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, I hope you're okay with that, we've certainly been waiting on this agreement for quite a while from GDOT, so I have no problem with it being added, so clerk, if you could just add it to the agenda tomorrow on the new business.
Hey, Mark, I'm Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
Is there any cost to us on this, or is it just all GDOT?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was the first part of the question?
Uh, is there any cost to us, to the commission, or is it all GDOT? What, what's the matching, what's the matching plan?
Yes, so actually, I think the estimate is, once the landscaping is finished, um, you're looking at about fifty thousand dollars per year to maintain it, Georgia DOT will not maintain, uh, the landscaping on I-20, we would be required to maintain it.
Okay, so we're looking at fifty thousand dollars to maintain, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if tree funds are available, we can use, uh, tree fund money for the maintenance of these locations. Right now, we're using, of course, we don't know what the cost is, but, um, we'll probably use most all of it for the actual construction and installation.
So we're going to use the tree fund money to do all the installation, so that's one of the matching funds that we're dealing with with GDOT on this round. Then after that, then after that, we're looking at maintenance of at least fifty thousand dollars to cover it, I'm assuming that's not per one, but that's all, uh, is that, is that fifty thou, fifty thousand dollars per, uh, intersection? Or, I mean, uh, exit ramps, or, or help me out, so I make sure, I'm, I'm just going to make sure-
Yeah, I'll have to confirm, I, but it's my understanding it was for all four, but I will confirm.
Please do, so we can make sure, because I, I, I think we got to make sure that we, we count Commissioner Robinson states that we follow the money, and make sure that we're following the dollars, and assuring that we're not digging the hole even deeper, that's what we're already dealing with. Not that I don't want to do it, I just want to make sure that, okay, we just added this to this, we just added to, to possibly do mail out, to tell everybody that can, you know, do absentee ballots, or, you know, do we take a different approach? But I'm just making sure that we understand that we, we could be adding, no, we are adding an expense, period. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay, well stated, I'll yield at that point.
It won't hit, that expense won't happen until, um, probably the early part of, uh, twenty-twenty-one.
Right, I get it, because we've got the tree fund that we can use to offset the cost now. But, you know, there, there's not much tree fund money coming in, though, that I can think of, unless there's some building-
Yeah, there has been here lately. We received a big check earlier this year.
Right, because there, there's some developing going on, but I don't know, Mark, based on, you know, the real estate market.
Yeah, can't, can't predict it.
No, and it's slowing down, just FYI. So, we, we just haven't seen the slowdown yet because of kind of what's happening, but within this COVID-nineteen, uh, we can, we can expect a significant change in, in real estate, whether it's coming to the, the, the cost of properties, to the mere fact of the, the, the buying and selling of property, so just FYI, so don't get too far ahead of yourself, not you, Mark, but, you know, I'm just saying to this board to pay attention to detail. Outside of that, I'll yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. All right, Mark, um, you have anything else to add regarding the landscape?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Look forward to seeing it tomorrow. Okay, with that being said, Board of Commissioners, I will certainly, um, ask that the attorney, uh, Attorney Bernard, we need to go into executive session.
Yes, ma'am, for all three, legal, real estate, and personnel, Madam Chair, Mark, can, Mark, you can give McGill or Frederick, whoever you want to start with.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, do we have a, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Port of, Port of, Madam Chair, before you call the motion, uh, just seeing that we about to go into this, I, I believe we've got a committee meeting, can you make the public aware that we may not come out in time? I'm not certain when we come out at, but we will pick it up as soon as we come out, can you make sure that happens?
Yes, absolutely, just want to make a, a public, um, notification, public, please, uh, and our citizens of Douglas County, our, uh, Finance Meeting is scheduled to start at two o'clock today, but however, we are running a little behind on our, uh, in our work session, and we're getting ready to go into executive session. However, we, uh, invite you to join us, and I'm looking at maybe perhaps at the two-thirty, two-thirty-five time, uh, timeframe. Uh, certainly, um, Communications Director, if you could just keep everyone posted, and maybe, uh, send out a mass email or something, put it out there so the citizens will know what time we will return. With that being said, uh, do we have a motion, and I believe we said, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Some.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, please, let's start with District One, and by, with your response.
Commissioner Mitchell, District One, yes.
Kelly Robinson, District Two, yes.
Torania Carthman, District Three, yes.
Anne Jones-Guyder, District Four, yes.
Ramona Jackson-Jones, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, yes, we have a five-o unanimous vote, and the motion carries, uh, Board of Commissioners, um, we will certainly chime off our system just briefly, and then we will return, um, to our, or we'll start our executive session. Mark, give us some instructions like you always do, what do you want us to do, just?
Yep, log off this meeting and stay on Microsoft Teams, and we'll call you in one by one.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what that-
All right, sound like we're ready to go, well, good, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for our executive session, and we, uh, had a productive, uh, meeting, and certainly our work session was very productive today. Uh, it was quite lengthy, but it was, it was well worth it, it was very meaty and provided good information, and I look forward to our Board of Commissioners meeting tomorrow at six PM. Uh, are there any announcements from the Board of Commissioners before we, we're finally in this meeting? Okay, if there, if there are no announcements, this meeting is adjourned, and have a great day, thank you, citizens of Douglas County.
Finance Committee.
Oh, I've- Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Kelly? Commissioner Robinson, sorry, so if there's two Microsoft-